We do have a flag back here, so if you please join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we'll call to order. So tonight is Tuesday, May 11th. It's seven o'clock. This is the regular council meeting for the city of Malibu. For those of you that are new here, we have an agenda printed before us, and as printed or amended will be followed for our meeting tonight. And so any necessary and needed actions by the council can be addressed. The agenda can be amended by proper motion. Business from the floor is welcome and allotted for on our agenda. Though we missed it here, we will put floor items in there. If you have something that's not on our agenda to be covered tonight, and you want to bring it to the attention of the council, you'll sign up in the sheet in the back there. You'll have three minutes. You come to the podium, give your name and your address. And then when you're recognized by the presiding officer, which is the mayor, you have three minutes to make your comments. We do have copies of our agenda. It's pre-printed there, available on the back. If you haven't signed in, please sign in in the paper in the back. And then please silence your cell phones. We thank you for attending tonight. We will be doing the audit. That's the second thing on our list, so we'll get to that quickly. So if we can have a roll call of the attendants tonight, please, Lori.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Councilmember Blake.
Here.
Councilmember Alders.
Here.
Mayor Pelon.
Present.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Here.
All right, and we also have Planner Stockman, Commander Heath from the Sheriff's Department, Assistant Chief Joe Lawrence from the Fire Department, and we have our auditor here tonight, Special Command Performance, Mike Povell.
Tracker.
That's right. I'd approve our agenda. So we do want to add after the... I think we'll add it after the financial report and the floor items. And Commander, if you're all right, following that as well?
Floor items.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
All right, so for the agenda, we're going to do the consent agenda. Then we'll do the financial report for the audit. Then we will do the floor items, and then we'll do the sheriff's report.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I do have two additions to the agenda. So after the recycling center, I would add in the farmer's market RCA that was sent out last week. And then I realized today that I have a lot RCA that's just stipend for the farmer's market. And then, under for greater good of the council, to discuss battery recycling center event. And then to schedule a meeting for council to discuss the P and Z appointments.
And I would like to add that for the greater good. To bring up the League of Minnesota Cities has their annual conference coming up in June. It will be a virtual conference. It will be online. So it'll be a reduced version of what they normally have, a three-day conference in June, somewhere in the state. But they'll be doing a reduced version of that in June. So I want to bring it to the attention of council members, if they're interested, to communicate that to Lori, and so we could sign up council members for the annual conference.
Mayor Pelon.
Councilmember Alders.
We probably also need to agree on a date to review some of the discussion we've had in the past for some of the last couple lot splits and some of the P and Z stuff. We postponed it twice, so we probably need to get that out on the agenda.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I cannot understand Councilmember Alders.
Councilmember Alders said we had scheduled a meeting last month to review the process for some of the questions that came up over lot splits and some of the planning and zoning issues. And we had to cancel that meeting. And so we'd like to get that rescheduled and back on our agenda.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
And we need to agree on a date while we're going to pick our planning and zoning team members as well.
That was what Councilmember Rainville put on the greater good there.
Okay.
All right, so revised agenda to add floor items after the financial report, sheriff's report after that. And then we have farmer's market, RCA. And then we have league conference, Saturday recycling event, scheduling the selection of our P and Z commission members, and rescheduling the P and Z discussion from last month. Anything else on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
The cell tower easement.
Yeah, let's put that at the bottom of planning and zoning as item D. Mary, Liz brought something tonight for discussion only. The cell tower people would like additional easement to get back to. They want to add a generator at the base of the cell towers by the chain link fence outside the fire station. And so she would like to have a general discussion on that. No action to be taken tonight. So we would put that as item D under planning and zoning. And is there any way you can... Do we have that electronically?
I can send her a couple maps so she at least can see.
You would send that to Mary.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
And Jill left? We offended him that easily? So we offended Joe already?
He got fired, huh?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that we approve the agenda and discuss the additions and moving the items around.
I second it.
Hey, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Lori, do you know if with one person missing, do we still have to do a roll call vote?
If one person is missing?
Well, one person is virtual.
They typically say to do roll call votes when everybody's virtual. I don't think we have to do roll call votes. It's not required.
Okay. So we're going to do a verbal vote, and so Mary just can weigh in rather than a roll call, since the rest of us are all visible. So all those in favor of the revised agenda as presented, please motion by saying, or say aye.
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 And disagree, or opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I did have one question on the consent agenda. There's a donation from the Elk River Hockey Association, the last bullet point. And on the information we received from the Hockey Association, there's a note in the resolution that says it's to be used for the hockey and for the rink improvements. And there's a note that if possible, please use money for rink improvements. I'm not sure what improvements we have for $14,000. But looking at the RCA from the Fire Department, we'd like to at least consider that maybe a portion of that is typically we take our charitable gambling and give it to public safety. They have requested that if possible, this be used for the rink. Lori, do you know, I mean, $14,000 is a lot for the rink we currently have?
Mayor, council, an idea that came up regarding the rink, I was discussing with staff on what would make it easier for them to flood the rink. And they said that it would be very nice to have, if we were to use the money for this, have it concrete poured all along the outside of the rink to contain the water inside with the liner.
Okay.
Yeah. And it would keep the boards more sturdy as well.
Do we have a guess at it on that? I know when we originally put the rink up, we quoted that.
Yeah, we have not gone out for any bids on it without council direction. It was just an idea that came up. And if it's approved to go towards the hockey rink, we could certainly get some estimates.
Because I know they're looking for about $7,000 more in the Fire Department, too, so I don't know. It might be reasonable to split the difference, but... That sounds like an expensive proposal.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
That's a big piece of cement out there. Is it our discretion where this money goes solely?
Yes. And then they would only be talking about a base underneath the boards, not the whole.
No, not the whole thing. No, just around the edging of the boards. Just the edging is what she's talking about. The support.
So they basically be putting a curb in there, and so when the liner's in there, that would not tend to run out underneath the boards like it did this year.
Right. I still think that would be a pretty penny. I like your idea that we address public safety first and then look at what's left.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I like the thought of sending it on a request for public safety. We will be getting, or we should be getting quarterly donations from the Elk River Hockey Association. So this cover's January, February, March. So we get another check in three months if things stay at status quo. That would give us the opportunity to have staff go out and get proposals for a concrete curving along the outside of the rink, and we'd know what that costs. But I'm in favor of taking the overage on the request for the SCBA compressor installation and taking that overage and using this money to melt the Elk River Hockey Association.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I think that's a good idea, but I do think we need to be respectful that they'd like us to use it for the hockey rink. So the idea that maybe the next donations would be something we could use toward it. I just don't like the idea of us saying, well, you gave it to us, but we decide where it goes. Even if that's the way it should be, it's just nice to be respectful of their requests because they are being generous to do that.
Well, actually, it's required, but...
Well, it doesn't matter, still.
But I do think with Councilmember Rainville's comment that those checks should...
It's $14,000 every three months.
Yeah.
So it's...
There will be more opportunity where the SCBA station needs to be now.
Yeah, I think it should go now. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying...
So we'd split it, but make sure...
Should be respectful that we're looking into seeing if there's a possibility and that we should do that. Just so that they know that we're making an effort to at least consider what they're asking us.
Yes, and we would take the other half of that and set it aside for those purposes. And that'll give staff a chance to evaluate.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I'm just reinforcing, saying I like what she said.
Okay, so with that in mind, let's pull that resolution out and vote on that separately. The rest of the consent agenda, the council meeting minutes from April 13th, treasurer's report and claims April 7 through May 10th, a resolution approving liquor license applications for Longhorn Group, doing businesses bootleggers, resolution for approving Longhorn, or the liquor license, application for Burns Bottle Shop and Northwoods Barn Grill. As the consent items. Councilmember Rainville.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I have not received any information on any business applications.
I haven't either.
Mayor, council, you have the previous, or the previous agenda, not the updated agenda. Those who remember.
I'm sorry. All right, so we removed the liquor license.
Yes.
My mistake. Apparently, I'm working off of the agenda that was in my packet. I didn't see the updated one, so... So we are now approving the council meeting minutes and the treasurer's report and claims. A motion to approve the consent agenda.
I motion that we approve the consent agenda as stands.
Second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Blake motions. Councilmember Alders seconds. Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2021-22, accepting donation from Elk River Hockey Association. It's been recommended we take, split that, put $7,000 towards the improvements for the rink and $7,000 towards the SCBA extra that's needed. We have a motion to that effect.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the donation and split the amount equally between safety improvements and rink improvements.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Alders.
A second.
Mr. Mayor.
We have a second from Councilmember Blake. Councilmember Rainville.
That's fine. Councilmember Blake, you can...
All right.
Sorry.
That's all right. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Michael, you are up. So we'll go on to item number four, the 2020 audit report.
I can be quick because Lori...
That'd be so out of character, though, Mike.
What's that?
That'd be so out of character. So that'd be so out of character. We want the thorough. No, we appreciate the summary that you gave us ahead of time to go with the report, so thank you for that.
Did everybody get that, one of those little letters that kind of...
Yes.
Now, Mike, did you meet our new council member, Jason? As I breezed past him coming in, yes. So he, this will be his first audit going through, so...
I, uh, I kind of, but we're allowed to do our own board, right?
I can do that.
We saw each other coming in the door, so...
So Mike, how long have you been doing our audits? How long have you been doing audits for us?
How much?
How many years?
How long have you been doing this?
Oh. Jeez, uh, back to when it was a township.
And we're still solvent, so thank you.
And there was a clerk named Penny Schmaby.
Yeah.
That was a clerk. Anybody remember her?
I remember Penny.
Liz probably doesn't.
Joel and I are probably the only ones who do.
The, uh... The report has strengthened it just tremendously since that time. It used to be real simple accounting, and now it's super complex. That's why I gave you that letter, kind of directing you through it, because it contains information that you're not particularly interested in, but other people are, like the underwriters are interested in some of these things. I remember Joel, and I got into a big conversation about, uh, remember that? How many times this report gets reviewed?
Yeah.
Back in, what was it, 19, AEM reviewed it, the state auditor reviewed it, and a peer reviewer reviewed it. It was reviewed three times. We'd be happy to know that it's been reviewed twice more, and the peer reviewer checked it again.
Really?
She likes the, apparently, the name of Nowden. So, um, I'm going to send you...
And she was happy again?
What's that?
And the peer reviewer was happy again?
Yeah, very happy, yeah. As a matter of fact, Nowden's the only report that a peer reviewer gave me a compliment on. That was a hell of a nice report. On others, they'll say anything nice. We criticize it, but we never say anything nice. I think we'll go right to page seven and eight. That's the kind of thing that, uh... This is Dorf, Dorf's budget. Lori Jaeger, Strike's budget. It's the federal budget. And you can see, uh, there's a heck of a lot of variances at all. The, uh, even the revenues came in pretty much as a budget. And the expenses on page eight, take a look at about three or four, so we got total expenditures. Depending, I don't know, how much closer can you get? So congratulations on that one. And if you think that's just a simple thing, it's not true. The so few cities that I've done are able to stay within that budgetary thing. We did set up a separate fund, and you can see that on page three and five, for the cares, so that that wouldn't goof up the budget at all. So, uh, the... One thing that peer reviewer lady is complaining, and I thought I'd have you guys approve this while I'm here, is she said that I do too much of the accounting work. That's not true anymore. Lori Jaeger, RTY, she is doing the tax setup, which is the most complicated thing, right? You're learning the accounting, your tax setup is relatively complex because you have all kinds of different fund issues. So she does a wonderful job of that, I believe, there. But I want to get her to do the last two things that I'm doing. And I understand the peer reviewer is right. She said, "Hell, you're doing a major check and load," she said. "You know, you could do that. You've checked your homework sometimes, right?" So what I'm trying to do is to get the council to approve Lori Jaeger to do the property depreciation. I bought one of those along. If anybody wants to see what it looks like, uh...
So Lori, have you had this discussion?
What's that?
So you've talked it over with Lori Strike?
Yes, we've talked about it.
So you've talked us with Lori Strike?
Yeah, yeah.
And you concur?
I don't mind doing it.
We can take care of it.
So...
I guess I'm...
So as a council, we agree that you can turn this over to Lori. Right, council?
Yes.
And the same thing with special assessments now. Special assessment, you can have it if you want to. Special assessments, I can't give you this, it's the only contest I've got. But seeing, uh... Wasn't a big deal until now. You had Pinnaker, and that was the only special assessment fund you had. And you had a green acres at the salt. Watch that green acres, whatever you're doing. Don't let that get forgotten. I've seen those green acres get forgotten, believe it or not, because the county gets, they don't care one way or the other. So we, as a city, are responsible to watch those green acres. I've seen some get, remain unpaid. And they fell right off the... See, the county's not perfect. And that's why I want you to also approve Lori Jaeger to pick up the special assessments. The key thing here, there's hundreds of partials. Let's say they're all on four or $5,000 assessments, okay? Tremendous number of transactions that the county could make a mistake on. We could make a mistake on here. But there's a way of keeping track of it, a master schedule that shows the total amount that was assessed in the first place, or levied, whichever you want to use. And then you keep track of those by serial number, so you never forget it. Oak Grove would have lost $44,000 of assessments if I wouldn't have caught that, if I wouldn't be doing that. But once again, the peer reviewer doesn't like me doing work and checking it, too. I understand.
So Lori, you've had that discussion also?
I didn't think there'd be too much approval required for that.
So Mike, we're good with those two going over to Lori then.
Lori's willing to do it, too.
Yeah.
I think. The, uh... I guess if we follow the, very quickly, the table of contents, we've got two of these listed there of council keepers. One of them has its January 1st, and the other one has its December 31st. We wanted to get that, we wanted to include that occasion there. So you're on that, but that's one of these two schedules. As you move forward, what they call the area of management discussion and analysis. The only reason I want to bring in that, uh... This is a different page of this. Now, this is usually written by somebody in the city, like the city management city. It could be written by a county, we'll see. Because it really is supposed to be from you guys. Now, I write it because it has to contain certain information in parts with the government accounting standard. So I can check that, but if somebody wanted to put some more information in that management discussion and analysis, they could. Very quickly, page one, as I mentioned in my letter, this is your 3M report. Now, it doesn't do you any good. Because you're not going to be looking at this, but the underwriter's going to look at it. Because he doesn't understand page seven and eight. He has no idea what government accounting is. But he understands this balance sheet. He sure does. The key to us is pages three and five, which are major funds. You can grab either one of those pages. Take a look at the fire rank column, and you'll see it's called a non-major fund. Now, you wonder, Lori, what the funds are? Well, the non-major funds are summarized way in the back of the report, 24 through 28. And then the totals are very broad here. Why have only the major big funds on pages three and five? Now, that is a presentation that the state auditor is going to look at, at three and five. What else does anybody want to talk about? This is, you know, a very sophisticated report. It didn't happen overnight. It happened over the years. I would say the biggest... And I would say the biggest, biggest complainers were the underwriters. They haven't any idea how to read a governmental report. So now, in, in the front of the report, we have a business financial statement, or they call it a business model. And, uh, so that, they, it makes them happy as a lark. And the, the other thing in the management discussion analysis, you see a couple of pie charts. Oh, they love those too. Underwriters love pie charts. So, uh, the, uh, pages, page sixteen is the one I just kinda talked about. The, uh, it's, uh, page sixteen. It's the summary of, of what I gave to Jeff. Now it's actually page fifteen, called capital assets. And if you take a look at that page, uh, Jeff's got the detail of every, everything that's on there. Summary in the financial statement, okay? The, uh, the other pages beyond it, uh, seventeen, sixteen and seventeen, talk about all your bonds. So of, of all the footnotes, I would say those are the only pages that are, uh, full of information that you might want to know at some point in time. Looking at, uh, those pages way in the back, twenty-five. Twenty-four is the first one. You can see, uh, we don't have many of those funds anywhere. We've got a building fund and equipment replacement fund. And Pinnaker is in there too, for, uh, unatlawled funds. On page twenty-four and twenty-five. The last of our little report is page twenty-six. And that's, uh, the big debt service funds in the other. Pretty much fading out except for the 2012 A, uh, a few years ago. So what, uh, those little funds are summarized for a 2020 total, and then they're brought forward to the main balance sheet. My letters, my letters. If everybody can find that. My letters are on page, it's got the hoofier Roman numeral that-
It's a two?
Yeah.
Roman numeral two, is that your letter?
Two and three.
Yeah.
Yeah, way up in the front. Roman numeral two and three. And that report, uh, I'll get you all entangled in the English language. Lawyer's has torn it apart and everything else. Uh, that says that everything is fine. Everything is, uh, materially correct in every respect. There are two letters way in the back that I think launched the two also. And those letters are the last page of the report. And one of them has to do with internal control. And the second one has to do with legal compliance. And I believe it's, uh, twenty-eight is, is legal compliance. And it says that you've done, you've done that, you've done everything legally. Lawyer's all up, I'd be happy to see that. And, uh, page twenty-nine talks about internal control and that their internal controls are, are adequate to get the job done. Do you think, uh, you want to mention anything else, Lori? Covered it. Go ahead. Oh, except, uh, yeah, I, I did pay for my fee. What's my fee, about eighty-five hundred? I found an error of ninety-five hundred dollars that, uh, we got the money back, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. The only thing that bothers me about it is that, uh, on the back of our checks, uh, it says under penalty of, penalty of perjury. If this, if this had been previously paid, uh, uh, that they signed it and cashed it anyway. So that was a misdemeanor that they, they committed by doing that. Knowing that it was a double payment, uh, uh, you think it was pretty much inadvertent, right?
Absolutely.
And, and we got the money back now.
This is to a vendor?
Yes.
Who?
Vendor.
Well, vendor.
It was just, it was a one-time payment?
It was a, we were invoiced and the payment was submitted to them. And then a couple months later, we were re-invoiced for the same project. But it was mixed amongst, it was a road improvement project. It was mixed amongst other activities too. So Mike found it and we contacted them and they sent a check back right away.
Thank you.
Good job, Mike.
Yes.
As long as you're finding, as long as you find things more than your, your bill every year, this is great.
Yeah.
Wow.
The, the, uh, I, I, as I look at your books, I, I, I already know what should be there. That's why I catch those things. I know what should be there. It's just, I, like you said, uh, many years.
Yep.
So I know exactly what to expect and anticipate. And, um, while you decide whether you want me to look at anything else, uh, you're the boss here. Lori was completely cooperative. She just gave me everything I needed. It wasn't that easy. Uh, it wasn't like coming out here and digging through the drawers and digging out invoices. She had to email all this stuff to me. So I want to congratulate her for a fabulous job. Being so helpful to me to, uh, to get it done and audit by email.
Nice one.
And Lori Jaeger, she, she was, uh, uh, every time I had a, a problem, she would, uh, she would dig into it. And, uh, we'd get it resolved. So, uh, we got a good, a good set of books. We got a good product. And, uh, you're happy now with your accounting system.
Banyan.
The, the strange thing about Banyan is, uh, I wrote that program. The guy, Banyan, uh, was hired by the city of Forest Lake. And the administrator there said, uh, "Yeah, we gotta, we gotta go electronic." So I, I showed, they hired Banyan. He didn't know anything about, uh, governmental accounting. So I showed him how to set up a city on, on, uh, electronic media. You talk about a small world, right?
Right.
And, uh, fifteen years later, I, I, I bump into it. He never did offer, uh, offer up any, uh, mullet of me for showing him how to set it up. Did I miss anything? I went over my limits, right?
Thank you for the input.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah. I'm gonna have a cookie and run.
All right. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
You guys, uh, technically had to approve it.
Mary, did you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Council, any questions?
No.
All right, we will then, uh, with the presentation of the report, no questions. I will take a motion to approve the audit as presented.
I make a motion to approve the audit as presented by Michael Pofal.
Councilmember Greenberg makes a motion. Councilmember Rainville.
I would second, uh, Councilmember Greenberg's motion.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Michael.
Well, somebody likes the snickerdoodle.
All right.
I'm sure the officers that can help you out, there's quite a few left here.
Commander Heath's taking one home to the family, so.
Look at the size of the, uh, bobby balls.
I only got half through mine.
Jason, Joel, Linda, Jeff, Mike Frazier.
Good night.
Don't, don't feel, I mean, any questions, you know, you can, my phone number's right in, on top of my reports. They can call me on anything, on any page. I practically know by heart, but-
Okay, we'll call you.
Yeah. And I might have missed something, too.
I doubt it.
Thanks, Mike, have a good night.
Good night.
Back this time, I was thinking, makes me hide. Two people in our, in, in Lindstrom that were, I hate to even admit it, were the people that were at Capitol, Capitol Hill, Bannet's, or whatever you want to call them. I can't get a person from Lindstrom on the way to Washington.
Yeah. Wow.
Yeah. It's a wild world out there.
Oliver, good evening.
Well done, drive carefully. All right, anything on floor items back there? Anybody here for a floor item?
Is Dan, is, uh-
Tan, Tan, Timo?
Timo.
He just kinda comes and observes, and he's, he's not up there asking some.
Well, this would be his opportunity.
I think he's gone for the evening.
Okay.
All right, Commander Heath, sheriff's report.
Oliver, good evening, page number one. I'll keep it, uh, as brief as I can tonight. Uh, just hopefully the calls for service, uh, got to Lori so she could distribute them to the council. But in April, we had a hundred and seventeen calls for service. And if you, one of the things I wanted to point out to the council is the last couple of months, we've seen a little bit of a decrease up at Bar Nun. Which kinda leads me into my next point that I wanted to bring up to the council is, uh, in late April, uh, the Department of Human Services issued their findings after an investigation at Bar Nun. And after their investigation, uh, they found five determinations of maltreatment by neglect, and then five determinations of failing to report the maltreatment to the Department of Human Services, as well as thirty different licensing violations, um, that they uncovered. Basically what they did then, uh, Bar Nun has the ability to appeal the findings by the Department of Human Services. And I've seen nothing yet as to whether or not they will. Um, but what the Department of Human Services did is place them on a conditional license status for a period of two years. And that started on April 21st of 2021. And they were also fined fourteen thousand dollars. So, um, I heard nothing from, else from the Department of Human Services, so I'll kinda wait and see if there's anything else. Uh, I wasn't just, uh, emailed contact with the investigator that was there. And she, she said, "By all means, if we see anything as a city, um, and things we're responding to at the facility, to please let them know they want to be aware of it." So, um, I'll continue to, to monitor that. And at some point, I did hear from Bar Nun, and, and I know they will be reaching out to us to talk. And if I get that piece of, uh, if I get that request to talk to them, I will ask that the, the city be included in that conversation as well, so everybody here is well aware.
And do we have a copy of that report?
Uh, I can provide it to the council.
That would be good.
You know, that, that sounds severe, you know? I mean, to put on a conditional, what, what, what does, what are the conditions that they're under for two years? I mean, it's-
And-
That, that's significant.
It's a, it's a lot to digest. Um, I actually have a copy of, there's actually two reports that came with it. And this is one of them, and it's about thirty pages long. And there's another one. And, and quite honestly, I don't know all of the, the speak of what the Department of Human Services is talking about when they look at a specific incident and see a violation and then talk about that. So I purposely didn't want to bring that up because I don't want to give you bad information, if that makes sense. Um, I can look at it more closely and see if there's some more I can digest to provide to the council. But the way I read it is they did put conditions in there that Bar Nun has to follow and things that have to be improved. Um, and they're going to be checking that. And if they're not up, if they don't follow those conditions, that they will lose their license or there'll be more sanctions taken. So, but I, as far as that, um, maybe I could have, and I don't know if the council would be interested in seeing if the Department of Human Services could provide more light on it, and would be willing to talk to the council. I just don't want to misspeak and misinform the council.
No, no, I understand. And I, I think about the previous reports we've got from the, the Health and Human Services. And, and some of the incidents were multiple occurrences, but because they were written up on a certain day, I mean, the process allowed twelve incidents to come out, to be recorded as one. And so listening to, you know, a brief summary of what you had there, if any of those were multiple incidences, recorded as, as one, that's significant. More to the point is, our concern is we, we've had these, uh, interjections by various entities in the past, only to not really see any changes. And so it would be nice to know the conditions that, that are called out in the report as a result, how they're gonna be monitored. And as you say, they could have more sanctions, or ultimately they could lose their license. Now in our meetings with, uh, Human Services, they seem very reluctant to actually pull a license. And then of course, Volunteers of America has, has indicated that there's fewer and fewer of these, uh, available facilities. And so, uh, they would hate to lose any because they're losing them down in the cities as it is. So I just want to know, because what happens is, it just seems like we, we get satisfied, put on a back burner, until we have fifteen squads show up again. And so I want to make sure that we're being proactive. What did you say? How are you gonna monitor it? And if we see something, the sheriff sees something, the fire department sees something, how, how do we respond? Who, to whom we respond? What do we expect to see when we respond? Because we've been put off for, for a decade.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, what I did is, the, the three questions that I wrote down here are, what are the conditions? How is that going to be monitored? What are the next phases if that, if there, if the penalties aren't addressed? Or the, the findings aren't addressed? And then what is the best remedy for us as a city? Whether it's the city itself, the fire department, or the sheriff's office, reporting further issues? If I could answer those, would that be helpful to the council?
Certainly would be helpful.
And I'll, I'll try to do my best and maybe get the investigator to help me, um, maybe pare down some of the, uh, violations and what the conditions are, uh, to make it more easily understandable.
And, and obviously, we'd like to see it in writing because, as Liz's report will show you, there's been a lot that's gone on over the years. Some it's documented very thoroughly, some of it not. And with all the violations we've seen in the past, there, there weren't sanctions or conditions put on previously, so. That's, those are significant findings.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
Commander Heath, uh, was this, uh, pretty much news to the Department of Human Services? The conditions out there, have they been unaware of what, um, has been happening with our sheriffs and, uh, the interactions over there? Would they be interested maybe in ongoing communication with how many calls of service and what types of service are out there?
I think that- I think that when we talked, when we got the Department of Human Services involved, and there was a letter that was sent to them, I think that triggered them understanding the scope of the problem that was there. And I guess my thoughts are, and I'll ask for some guidance from the council, is, if we continue to, if, if we continue to see things as they are, where we're seeing a decreased volume and a decreased seriousness of issues there, you know, maybe what we're asking for is taking hold. But all of a sudden, if we go with, like the mayor said, and we're, we go a short distance and we're starting to spike again, I think it would be advantageous to continue to then feed information to the Department of Human Services, saying, "Look, it was working for a couple of months, and now we're, we're on our climb back up." That would be my recommendation to the council, but I'll wait for you to let me know what you would like.
Yeah, I, I think that we need to coordinate. And I know the fire department had concerns, because they were called out on a regular basis, too.
Yes.
Assistant Chief Lawrence, you have any input at this point?
Mayor and council, it's just something that we're keeping an eye on. Most of what we've heard is involved Ramsey slash Now Then, and then also Oak Grove to a certain degree. So, I've only been out there one time, but it's something that we were going to kind of get our arms around and try and find out what we could do to reduce the calls for service out there. This is prior to knowing that they were under investigation and ultimately, a ruling took place. So, a couple of notes that we jotted down that I'll share with the chief is, now that an investigation was completed, we'd like to know a little bit more about that because in terms of reporting this stuff, we do know the entities to go to, but we, we do take that very seriously. So, if we're seeing things, you know, we don't wait. We notify right, right then and there, so.
I think, I think it's imperative that the fire department stay in close contact with the sheriff. So, you know, that if something is happening, there's no surprises either way that we're... And, and, and obviously, I think the sheriff, he could be proactive with the types of incidents where appropriate, where, where, you know, the law allows to communicate. Because we don't want the fire department to walk in on something that you guys knew that the type of activity was going on, and the firefighters walk in and are surprised. I mean, the incident in November, had the fire department been involved in that before you got there, it would have been a mess.
And, and I understand. And just so the council's aware, the, the standard protocol for that is, if fire is dispatched to a call with us, if it's a medical or some type of incident, and there's hostilities going on, they're generally advised of that. And what they will do is wait at a safe location, if it's possible for them to do so, and not enter that without. And then, they won't enter that situation until our deputies have advised that it's safe for them. And we use the same protocol for EMS as well. So, for the ambulances coming, we don't ask them to go in until it's safe enough for them to do so.
So, was, was fire in the, in the, the large incident in November, was fire involved since there wasn't medical?
I don't believe, I don't remember seeing a fire response to that.
In a case like that, if they called medical, fire would be dispatched?
Depending on, and, and Assistant Chief Lawrence can, can help me. Sometimes, I think on some of the mental health calls, I don't know as if there's always, if rescue is always advised on those.
So, Mayor and council, typically, we're going to what we call the top five priority calls, you know, heart attacks, unconscious, difficulty breathing, stuff like that. So, depending on what the call was coded, fire may not have been dispatched to it. Mental health crisis would be one of those ones we typically wouldn't respond to with the Now Then Fire Department.
And then, it would, again, if, if our deputies got there and found out that it was more of a medical necessity, we have the ability to ask for fire to come right away. And that's pretty standard in, in the different areas where we work. Sometimes, what is reported to our dispatch center and what we find when we get there are completely different things. So, if fire wasn't started, our deputies will do that right away, ask them to start fire, and, and whatever other resources we need at the scene. And sometimes, vice versa. Fire might go to a call, and our deputies might be tied up on something else, and we ask them to advise us if, if our presence is needed. And if they get there and it's different than what, what, what they were told, they will do the exact same. Let us know that, well, actually, we do need you guys to come over here. So, we have that communication line is pretty standard with most agencies.
Councilmember Blake, since you've been heavily involved in this, do you have any questions at this point, or wait to see the report?
Well, I'd like to see the report, definitely.
Anything else you'd like the, the commander to ask on? Anything else you'd like to see presented to us?
No, I think what you talked about, we probably need to know something about the violations. Don't you think? Is that possible?
Yes, I'll get the report to Lori, and she can distribute it to the council, so everybody can take a look.
I think it would be nice if we did have a meeting with Volunteers of America. I think they, they were very sure that it wasn't a problem out there. I, I mean, I spoke to them a couple of times, and I, and they, it was, they bounced it off, sort of. The questions were not really directly answered. It was, it was a bounce off of, of what their answers were, and they didn't address the issue we were talking about as though things were okay. So, I think now that we actually know, and they know, that we know that there are problems, it would be nice, maybe, to meet with them and find out what their plans are.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, one of my recommendations was going to be, or at least a point I was going to bring up, simply because of the DHS findings, doesn't mean the city has to stop the path it was on for trying to address the issues that the city has had. You know, I, I, I believe that they can be looked at as two different things. You have Department of Human Services issues, and then you have City of Now Then issues that are being caused. And I don't think, just because the DHS has said this over here, that the city has to stop looking into its ability to put some parameters in place to help for better compliance with that organization. So, I would say that let's keep in motion what we had going, so it doesn't, at least on our end, fall off the radar. All of a sudden, they've got these sanctions, and they're doing well over here, but they still haven't addressed the concerns of the city so much. Would be my recommendation.
So, along those...
Don't you think that would be good?
Yeah. So, I was going to say, along those lines, you know, we've had our attorney working with, with Liz on, what are the conditions the city needs to see? Separate from DHS, obviously, to keep them licensed, there are certain things, and, and they've probably been a little more relaxed than, than we have, because we're the ones dealing with it directly, at the expense and the residents.
Right.
Concerns. So, I would like, I think, when we get the report together, make sure that the attorney's copied on it, too, if the council agrees, so that we're ready. DHS is doing this, and the city, you know, the planner and our attorney are recommending this from a council standpoint.
Right.
And I'd be...
We've got some leverage now.
Yep.
And I'd be glad to set up a meeting. It might be good to digest what we can out of that report and whatever advice you get from legal counsel, maybe before we set up that meeting, though.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see what, what Volunteers of America, how they respond to DHS. Because that, that's going to tell us a lot. They can tell us whatever they want, but they, they, we need to see how they're responding to this, these findings from DHS. Because that, that should go a long way in telling us what they're really going to do.
Right. And also, it's a little, it's support on how we're feeling about things that are going out there. Now, we have someone else supporting our comments and our thoughts and our concerns. It's not just us.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Stocker.
Yeah, we, I've had some recent phone calls from DOA attorneys, so they're pressing to get this application to a school rolling. And we do need to act quickly, because if they apply and we're not ready to respond, I mean, we're going to be under that subsidy bill, so.
That's why I wanted the, the attorney to be up to speed on it, so we can reply. I, I think we've, we've made it clear in our discussions with DOA, that until they can get their house in order, there's no point in, in applying for expanded activities.
But we don't want to, um...
I wonder when he came in, what that was. It's cursed.
It's cursed. We got a real cowboy.
Uh, to allow the continuation of something that was not permitted, you know? So, we have to address it, and either accommodate it or, or not.
So, so again, to, to make sure we're legal, I, I think that question has to go to, to our legal counsel and say, "They are not operating a school legally, and they want to expand it. They want to get the permit, the, the conditional use permit for the school and the greenhouse, and they're not operating legally at this point." But we need to make sure that we've got our ducks in a row. We, we tried to have that conversation before, and, and there was, the sheriff initiated it, and so, we had DHS on the one hand, and we had Volunteers of America on the one hand. We didn't have everybody in the same room at the same time. But they weren't understanding that just because somebody said they could operate a school, that's not legally operating there. And you go back through your, your records, what was operating there was a completely different entity than the school that's operating there now.
Well, right, and you know, as I knew that once you stop the activity, then, you know, for a year or more, and then come back to this brand of application.
So, so we, we need to make sure that, you know, so, so the question I would have Lori for Bob is, how do we proactively address this so we don't get caught in a 60-day rule if they do apply? Because once they apply, then, then we got that clock started. And if we can say, "The application isn't complete without these conditions," what are the conditions of the application? We were very clear in our conversation, is until you straighten out everything DHS finds, until you deal with the findings, the reports that the sheriff has provided, there's no point in discussing expanding operations, because you haven't demonstrated you can control what you're doing. But we need that put in legal language.
Yeah.
So, we don't get caught in the 60 days.
So, I believe it's critical that we schedule a meeting, whether it be with, you know, the CEO of DOA, as indicated, Demisha wants to be involved, and he's ever in charge over there now, but we need to all get in the same room absolutely.
Well, let's get this DHS report out immediately and get a copy to legal.
I will have it to Lori tomorrow, so she'll have it right away tomorrow.
And then, and then I think we, we need, do need to, you know, talking with the DOA, if they haven't responded to DHS, why would they respond responsibly to us? And that's, that's, that's people who license them.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Stocker.
If they have to respond, or they're going to lose their license.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think there's been some changes over there that have been simulated. I don't know that for a fact, but, yeah.
Has, has the sheriff any intention to, anything further with DHS at this point?
Could you repeat that, sir?
Do, do you know if the sheriff has any intention on, on anything further with DHS? After his initial letter, he got the ball rolling on this stuff. Is there, is, is he looking for any, any involvement at this point?
I think the idea now is to see, okay, now we have the DHS on board, what can we do here as a city, and, and have that two-pronged approach? We're not just letting it sit. I, I don't think, you know, at this point, he has to let the, the Department of Human Services do, go through their process. You know, there's not much that we can say or do that's going to influence that. And now, we just have to see what we can do on this side to help take care of the city of Now Then and the, and the issues it's creating here. That would be the direction we would...
Any idea if there's a, a timeline on DHS for Volunteers of America to respond?
I think there is. I'd have to look through the report to see what the time is, but I don't have it right off the top of my head.
That'll tell us something, too. If they're not responding in a timely manner, then, if they don't respond in a timely manner to DHS, we don't have the clout that DHS has. All right, well, let's start with the report, and then let's see what, what we can do to get together. What, what's the appropriate group to get together? Because I don't just want to go and, and, you know, that, that last conversation we had with, with DHS, I mean, with Volunteers of America, I think, Linda, you stated it best, when the letter came out, it was like, they didn't listen to anything we said.
No.
And, and...
We were not on the same page. It was just the strangest thing.
And I, I don't want to do that again, where we, we all go into theater and watch a different movie, and then come out and think we're happy, so. It certainly seemed that way to me, that they missed everything, so.
Completely agree.
All right. Commander, anything else?
I just wanted to bring up, for the council's information, maybe a few of you or all of you saw a news story on CARE-11 regarding the sheriff's office and us serving a search warrant with our SWAT team for the Minneapolis Police Department. Just a little bit of background, our team served a high-risk warrant in search of a suspect that was wanted in an armed robbery. The suspect that was named in the warrant, the warrant was executed at the Wright House that the suspect had lived in, but he had since moved out. What I wanted the council to know is there's been quite a bit of information in the media, and some of that information is just inaccurate. It wasn't...
Oh.
And, and my, my reasoning for bringing it up, not only is some of it inaccurate, but some of it was false. And there was information that was then relayed to other governmental entities in the city of Coon Rapids, that their elected officials believed was completely true. And my whole point for bringing it up, this group all knows all too well what would happen if you were operating with inaccurate information that had been given to you. And I, what I, my whole point in bringing it up is, first of all, we take our job very We are always reviewing things that happened to see if there's things we should change. But the biggest thing that I wanted the council to know is that when something like this happens, if you all, as a council, have questions, please reach out to me and ask. I want you to have the most accurate information that you can have to make the right decisions you need to for the city. And even if it's just understanding more about what we do as your law enforcement provider, I want you all to have accurate information. Everybody has my cell phone number and email. I welcome calls any time of day or night. If there's a need, I'll answer the call. But I want you guys to be able to have that information that's accurate, so you guys can make good decisions. More information will be coming out on this in the future, and I'd be glad to talk with any of you offline or as a council, when that's possible. Unfortunately, this is about the most I can say right now. But I wanted you guys to at least know, I, my reason for bringing it up is always being available to you as a resource, so you're not seeing something in the news and not wondering where you guys stand as a city in the services we provide. Or even if it's a question about law enforcement somewhere else, I can try to put some context to it for the council.
Is it common to have the SWAT team go outside the county?
To go outside the county? Yeah, common, but it does happen where we go outside of the county. And this warrant, just for the council's clarification, was served in the city of Coon Rapids.
Okay.
But the Minneapolis Police Department was the investigating body that had applied for and received a search warrant from the courts. So, we were serving and executing that warrant for them.
So, it was for Minneapolis Police, but in Coon Rapids?
So, more than anything, was just a point of information that I hope the council knows that I'm always available for you if you have questions or any, have those things you need answered, because I want you guys to have accurate information when you're making decisions or speaking to the public or the community about events, so.
Yeah, unfortunately, it, it does, with what's going on in, in other cities, and certainly, the continuing activities in Brooklyn Center, it does have people questioning, you know, the, you know, the decision to not make traffic stops and not to have chases or pursuits, and, you know, all of those things. When, when you start seeing those happen in other places, the question will come, how does the sheriff, how's the sheriff's responding to those? You know, and if something were to change... You know, and if something were to change on policies as far as pursuits or traffic stops or, sending in social workers instead of armed officers. Obviously, we'd want to know sooner rather than later if the sheriff has any plans on changing things. But we do have people that work in the city, do have people that certainly watch the media and are seeing that, so questions. When they do come up, we will forward them to you then.
Certainly. And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Commander Heath.
Just so you know, as, as a council, if there was going to be a change like that, we would let you know. Um, you're, this isn't just a, we, we wouldn't let you find out through third party or any other way. It would be something that would, would be communicated to the city, so, something like that large. But I think most of the people in this room know the sheriff and know his, his, uh, desire to do well for this county. And I don't think, um, you won't see knee-jerk changes in his response and how he has his organization responding and dealing with things in the community. If, if there are changes, it'll be well thought out and, and done for the best interest of the community as a whole.
And understanding, you know, we're, we're a contracted entity. If, if those types of things were to be considered, would, you know, hypothetically, would the sheriff consider input from those areas he's contracting? Or is it something, they're going to make a decision and we're going to find out about it and we're contracted for another year either way, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Commander Heath.
I, I believe that, you know, first of all, I want to put this, I want to put the city council at ease. You're, you're not going to see wholesale sweeping changes that you need to be concerned about. As far as if he would ask for the council for guidance on how he's going to, to, to have the organization perform, I, I don't see him, uh, seeking guidance in asking, what would you like me to do? I could see him asking, this is what I would, this is what I am planning on doing. I would like to have a conversation if you want to address what I'm planning on doing. I'm certainly willing to listen.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say that he's looking for guidance, but, you know, is there opportunity for input?
Yeah, I, and I can't speak for the sheriff, but what I would tell you is that I, I can't see him not being available for input and for conversation.
All right. Anything else for us tonight?
No, sir.
Counsel, anything for the commander?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville. Councilmember Rainville.
Yes, sir. So, to Commander Heath, I want to thank you for your work on Barden, on keeping this rolling on that. Second, I'd like to thank you for clarifying the issue of the warrant. You know, because it's in print and it's on TV doesn't mean it's correct, so thank you for that. And, uh, in regards to the comments from the mayor and the, uh, traffic violations and things that I've got, all these ideas are floating around, I feel very comfortable in that I don't see Sheriff Stewart as being one that would make a, what they call a knee-jerk decision, just to try to appease someone. So I'm comfortable that law enforcement will continue as it is in the local county. And, uh, if, if it were to come up, come in play, that, that Sheriff Stewart would have those conversations with the council. So, thank you.
And, uh, and I always want to continue to, uh, extend our best to the troops. Now, we, uh, we did have a, a situation where we asked for a little extra backup from your department and, and, uh, the person was available, checked in with me at the close of the meeting and it was nice to know they were sitting outside if we needed them, but, and then checked in when we saw the meeting break up, so appreciate the, the extra effort. And just to keep going back, say that, that, you know, as a council, we are extremely pleased with, with the relationship we have with our, our law enforcement and commend them for doing an excellent job, so.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll bring that information back.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
All right.
Uh, one quick thing, if you want, regarding VOA, I was just looking at his reports as he was talking. They have 30 days, up between 30 and 45 days to respond to these allegations. And there are some specific things that they have to do, so.
And that's as of April 21st?
Yeah, so that would be 10 days from the day would be May 21st. So by the end of May, we'll know what they've done or what they had to do.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Greenberg, uh, in regards to, um, Health and Human Services with the two-year conditional, I don't know, oversight that they have. I think it's a, it, it seems like it's a two-year period in which, um, the Human Services wants to make sure that VOA, um, performs in a way that is acceptable. And I think that two-year waiting period or that two-year trial period or whatever it is, conditional period, would be a great one for us to also, um, you know, use as a, you know, to just say, if these, these need to be met according to Health and Human Services, so for two years we wouldn't entertain a school. I just think it's something that, uh, we could come alongside.
We, we would have to see, that's why I want the attorney involved, because while we may want to do that, if they make an application, the state has a 60-day rule. And, and while we might say we want to put it out two years to see how you do with your compliance with the DHS, the statute would override that, I believe. And the 60-day rule would.
But I think what Joel's asking is, or recommending, or at least the discussion point would be, we would deny any applications for changes to coincide with the successful, uh, completion of their conditional license, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If, if that's what we could do, if the attorney says, yeah, we can do that, if there's an agreement that the council will deny it until there's a record of compliance, that would be great.
So we'll do it.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
I mean, another way you can do it is to tell them what you want and what they need to do and you give them a year. And then you can put a timeline on your permits too, so that they have to come back for review.
The, the problem we have with giving them a year is the staff turnover and the clientele turnover, um, is what's been significant. I mean, what, what started happening there in, uh, the last few months of 2020, when they started bringing clientele up from Plymouth, completely changed the makeup of the operation. So if we were on a year timeline and that was at the end of the year, suddenly it's a whole different organization. And I think that somehow we have to say, if there's a significant change in leadership or clientele, those have to be part of the conditions, because that's where we're seeing it, when the, the, the leadership turns over and you've got new people struggling to, you know, they're, they're trying to be more efficient and suddenly there's training issues and staffing issues. And certainly we saw in November, what happens when you start changing clientele and you don't keep up appropriate staffing and training or other provisions except for the sheriff's department, so. So I think we'd have to, we'd have to think that through the time itself wouldn't be enough. We'd have to have conditions that say if these, kind of like we do with interim use permits or conditional use permits, anything major changes, it's got to go back before the council, because if you're changing that, you just pushed out another year. And that's why I want to make sure that, that if we're going to recommend it, it's, it's legal. And, and if we can put those kinds of conditions on, I just don't want, like you say, I don't want to get caught with the 60-day rule.
Well, right, and there's, uh, we, yeah, we definitely need the attorney because, you know, you may or may not. I mean, there's two separate things there, there's the school and there's the residential facility.
Yeah.
We've only got the real authority with the school part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and, and again, if, if the, if the school part's that important to them, as the attorney says, that's how you reach into the other part of it, keep your residential facility going if you want to keep the school going. And, and the problem is, they'd probably be looking for a CUP for the school, which is, is tougher to say, if you don't meet these conditions, well, we can pull the CUP. It can be done, but it's a lot more difficult than an IUP.
Yeah, it can be done. So, okay, well.
But yes, we, we need to be moving sooner rather than later.
Who would you like to facilitate this meeting? Me, Lori, Bob, I mean, I don't know where you want, we need to come up with some dates.
Well, let's, let's get the report out and then I think, you know, Lori, it would make sense to have you run point on this and get the appropriate parties together. But I think we, we need to know, I think as, as a team, the sheriff's department, the attorney, the city, you know, the council and staff, need to know what we're going into. Because I don't want to have that discussion where we don't really know what we want and we start talking to VOA or DHS. I think we start with the report and say, okay, what, what do we know from this? What are we, what questions we have? Then we sit down and say, what is it we're asking? And so, because otherwise Bob will go down his way and, and they'll say they'll slip the school in, the application for the school, and then we got a whole different ballgame here. And we know from, from Volunteers America before and DHS, our, our meetings with them, they're not talking same language. And now we have a report that at least we can all talk that language. But Volunteers America, as, as Linda so, so well noted, it seemed like we were completely different page after we were done there. Whatever we said wasn't what they heard, certainly not what they responded to, so I don't want to do that again.
We didn't communicate well.
But I think it, it starts with what are we willing to, what are we asking for? What are we willing to accept? And we need to all be on the same page before we sit down. All right? So let's start with the report and then go from there. Thank you, Commander.
Good night.
All right. Assistant Chief Lawrence, you are up. We have an RCA for SCBA compressor. While you were out, we, uh, we had some monies that came in from charitable gambling and, uh, we voted to take a portion of that to cover the overage on the RCA request here.
Okay.
So I don't know if you had worked with Lori on where that money might come from otherwise, but we have budgeted $28,000 and we, uh, we came up with another $7,000.
That sounds good.
So you have an RCA request here, um, everybody understand what we're talking about here? I, I have a question on your RCA. Uh, you have Safe USA, I've got a one-page flyer here for 33427. And then we got this whole packet here from McQueen Emergency.
Correct.
Are we talking equivalent systems, Lynn just detailed it out?
Uh, so, you know, we put out a request, uh, for essentially bids and quotes, uh, to vendors within the area. There's not a ton that sell this type of equipment. Uh, these were the vendors that responded back to us. Uh, the proposal in front of you tonight is the lowest bid. And that is for the 33427 plus a $1,500, uh, for electrical needs. Uh, we have concerns, depending on where it's located in the station, what we might have to run to it for it to function properly. So, uh, it's possible, depending on the location in the station, we won't need that, but we wanted it just in case. And that's based off of every vendor we spoke with, so.
So are, are these, these two here equivalent?
They should be, I can glance at you quick. The, both of them are seven and a half horsepower, so, uh, they're going to be, there, there may be little differences between the two, but in terms of a compressor system, they should be somewhat apples to apples.
All right. So with that, Councilmember Rainville.
I'm sorry, was I acknowledged?
Yes, you were.
All right, thank you. So, uh, Mr. Mayor, to Assistant Chief Lawrence, um, if, because we've known that we want to locate the differential between, uh, what we have in the budget and what was, um, bid at, do you have a preference, um, between the two providers? It's a, uh, it looks like it's $960 difference. And just wondering if you have a preference between the two?
Mayor and council, uh, we don't necessarily have a preference, uh, both are very reputable. Uh, there's not a ton of different vendors to pick from or manufacturers for, uh, fill stations. Uh, so no, I, we're perfectly comfortable going with the lowest bid in this particular situation.
All right.
Okay, well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
If there are no other questions, I would move, um, that the council approve the purchase of the, uh, uh, SCBA compressor and fill stations through Fire Safety USA in the amount of $33,427, with an additional amount of approximately $1,500 for electrical storm upgrade that may be needed for project completion, for a total cost of $34,927. And we would use existing funds and the funds, excuse me, from the El River Hoppy Association donation.
All right, we have a motion, Councilmember Rainville, second, Councilmember Alders. Any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right, we got a fill station.
You know how easy that was?
Wait, I forgot that's the one.
Oh, I, I think that's coming.
I think that's coming.
And was there anything else? There's, there's an item here that says inventory needs, you ever check with the chief on that?
Yeah, uh, spoke with Chief Schmidt and, uh, just so everyone's aware, he, uh, he's injured his back pretty bad. Um, today he made it into the station for a couple hours and I kind of sent him home. Uh, he went to make a turn in his chair and he kind of hollered out. So, uh, he's, he's going to go see a specialist, uh, tomorrow and, uh, try and figure out what's up with it. But, uh, yeah, so he's, he apologized for not making it tonight. In terms of the inventory needs, um, there wasn't anything, uh, that he had recalled in terms of that, so we can scratch that.
All right. Will do. So what's the lead time on the, uh, the compressor?
So delivery is going to be probably more based on when they can actually find somebody to get it out here. So assuming that we make the purchase, uh, you know, say we did it tomorrow, I would say at minimum, you're probably four to six weeks out. And then we'll also delay that in addition to, now that we've identified the compressor, uh, we'll know the electrical needs and that'll give us a better idea of having a spot in the station prepared for when it is delivered. So assuming it needs, you know, just some minor adjustments with the electrical, you know, we could be, you know, six to eight weeks out.
Um, does that include trucking, shipping?
It should, so.
All right. And then, uh, you're going to auction off the old lockers or?
So that was something, uh, yeah, we, I, we talked to Lori today and, uh, that'll be something that'll be coming up in the future. So I think we got kind of a plan or an idea of how we want to handle surplus stuff in the future.
All right, well, we, uh, you know, obviously you're aware that we got up and running, uh, at the end of the month there. Had an eventful first couple of weeks. And, and the department handled it admirably. Very pleased with, with the process of bringing people on, the excitement I've heard from individual firefighters. And I think that, like I said, the first two weeks, we really tested. And, uh, came out very, very proud of how, how everybody responded for a brand-new department, so. I think your, your report was, you were pleased as well, so.
Yeah, Mayor. Counsel, it's been an eventful first couple of weeks. Uh, so the firefighters have done an awesome job, uh, with attendance and how they're functioning on scenes. Uh, they are very open to any of the changes that we've made to the degree where we have treaded lightly to not, you know, try to overstep our bounds and they're actually asking for changes. So I think, uh, I think we'll have a pretty smooth transition and, uh, we've got some really good ideas for them coming up here in the future. And, uh, yeah, so far, so good.
Good.
Great.
Any questions? Any questions for Assistant Chief Lawrence?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, Assistant Chief Lawrence, I want to thank him also for the updates that he provides between he and the chief.
That's nice.
Very informative, and it's very nice to be made aware of what's happening within the department, whether it be just structural, or when they're responding to incidents. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and our best to the chief. Hopefully, he gets relieved soon. Back problems are not good. And with your full-time job, you're able to, to hold up two departments and a full-time firefighting job?
So far, so good. Just as long as we keep doing stuff on my days off, we'll be just fine. Chief is listening in, and just so Council's aware too, we have our officer group in St. Francis receiving calls that go off in Now Then as well. So in the off chance either one of us isn't able to respond, we have a pool of six, or four to six officers in St. Francis who are kind of listening in. In certain situations, the, there's a mailbox that somebody blew up that kind of caused a grass fire, and one of our lieutenants responded, kind of helped manage that scene as well. So, we're developing redundancy between the two cities. The same goes for Now Then. They, well, St. Francis and Now Then's engine were operating at the house fire the other day. St. Francis had a pretty significant grass fire, and both the other half that wasn't at the house fire went over and kind of took care of that as well. So, very good interoperability, and everything seems to be working out really well. That was a daytime weekday event, those two at the same time. It's very difficult to find, you know, manpower during those hours, let alone to manage two scenes like that at the same time, so. Yeah, firefighters are doing an excellent job.
Do, have the Now Then firefighters met the officers? Should you and the chief be unavailable? Would they, they know who would be stepping in?
They are aware. In terms of knowing them on a personal level, that's happening, you know, as they show up to these events. It's gone well. We made sure, you know, the Now Then firefighters were aware. And we've also had the same conversation with the St. Francis officers, that everyone kind of knows their boundaries. You know, this is, this is new. We don't want a lot of friction. And so far, I mean, they're firefighters, they're all getting along well, and it's gone well, so.
Good. Well, thank you.
Yes.
You missed Firefighters Day last week, I think, or is it?
I think I was busy that day, but doing firefighting stuff, I promise. But, no, yes, it was Firefighters Day, so.
Our commendation to the team.
Yes.
We're proud of the transition, so.
I will make sure and pass that along to the staff over there, so.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Mr. Fralick was here. But it's okay, so Mr. Fralick was from Perkins property across the way. The customer received feedback, operated the auto care business, and a very integral part of the model surface, the main fence. Planning and zoning, recommended a freehold by a local contractor. They liked the fact that the unpermitted services won't be breached, and that the vehicles are behind the fence, and that we will be working with them to address how the signage will work over there. They'd like to share the pole, and Mr. Perkins certainly has.
The, the car? Is that gonna continue to be a sign? Because that, that doesn't give a great image on our main street. It's got a flat tire, it's missing its lights, it's it's hard to understand, you know, we're, we're up at the TMG, they certainly showcase, it's an operable truck. That's the only sign they have. This one here, it's hard to, hard to understand that that's a sign at this point. And especially when it's in with the other vehicles in that corner, so.
Well, right, and the fact that it's, yeah, the way it's parked.
Can't see the signage.
You can't see the logo. So, I mean, we can treat it like an inoperable vehicle, really. I guess, I'm just guessing, I don't know, that he may like the way it looks with the kind of antiquey look that it's got, but.
I think we want to be careful of precedent, because we may understand it's signage or image for him, but if somebody else in business had a vehicle like that sitting out front, we wouldn't we wouldn't tolerate it, and they may use that as an example, so.
Well, right, and the whole thing is not signage, just the logo, so, right.
So I think that's an issue. The other question that we touched.
But why is that, why is that?
Councilmember Alders.
Why is that an issue, and over at Sundells, that's fine?
Well, because they're asking for an additional signage on the post. So the question that came up at P&amp;Z was, if you're gonna use the vehicle as a signage, like they're doing up at TMG.
Then you don't need it on the pole.
And, and as Liz was saying, when you've got the car facing on, you can't see the signage anyway. You've got a car with no lights and a flat tire, and it doesn't, it's pretty obvious the Sundells have invested in an operable truck, and it's painted nice, and it's the only sign they have. It's well lit. This one looks like a inoperable car left in front of a building with a bunch of other cars, so. And when you can't see the signage on it, the other question was, they are allowed a total square footage for signage? Is, is the signage on either side of the car affect the signage that can go on the pole? So, so I think that certainly needs to be cleared up, because like I say, the Sundells went out and bought an operable truck, and it's in good shape. And that is what they chose to be their signage, without additional signage, so their square footage is fine. The other thing is, we talked about, so, does Renee have any ownership? Renee Perkins have any ownership in the? Or is it still a Dave Perkins company?
Well, I think it's a, I think he's got decision-making power, I don't know for a fact that.
I just want to make sure that, you know, because right now, you know, he's, he's co-signing with Mr. Fralick. Mr. Fralick's not an owner, he's leasing space. From a legal standpoint, is, you know, is an additional IUP or CUP on that property, do we need to clarify who really owns what? Who's, who's going to be responsible for paving the two, the area behind the house? For those of you who didn't see the P&amp;Z, the house was being used as a residence.
Yeah.
It's now an office.
Right.
And so it cannot go back to residential again. So the area behind it was the yard for the residence that was there, is now being used for parking, so that would need to be paved. And then on the northwest corner, there's a bunch of cars that are parked there that, on gravel, which would need to be paved. So part of this, those two areas would be paved. And that's Mr. Perkins' responsibility.
Renee has agreed to the paving, and they addressed an issue with the ponding.
Okay.
So.
Because that was the other thing, there was a drainage pond, there was supposed to be a pre-pond that got used for parking instead of drainage, so.
Right. So, apparently, yeah, Dave's not in that great a shape, so I don't know, you know, any details or anything, but Renee's running the whole operation over there, so.
Okay. So, so where the FX Auto car is, what are all those other vehicles that are parked out in front of the fence? It seems they're there day and night.
I guess, yeah, I don't know about night.
Well, I've noticed when we're leaving here, you know, typically after dark, there's still the gate shut, and there's still vehicles out front, so I just wondered, are they running crews at night, or they? Because it does seem like the cars are there.
Right, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
How many are there?
There look like four cars, and the one you're talking about, yeah, the one that has a sign on it, I was kind of curious if you wanted to keep it, if there was a way to display it like our friends over here were displaying theirs, instead of the temporary, it looked like it ran out of gas there 30 years ago. If you were to make it into a display, you know, with edging and trimming and all that stuff, and maybe move it into a different area. But I think I agree with you, once their sign goes up, maybe something should happen to that car. But if they really like it, then put some requirements on it, like it has to be elevated, there has to be edging, and it has to sit on rock, similar to what's happening over here.
It's not, it's, there's been nothing done to it.
Thirty years is generous.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what he likes, I mean, if that's his logo on the car, I, I agree that, I mean, if it's, we don't like the way, if it looks like it's just parked and abandoned there, but then I like Joel's idea, it's like, if that's, that's what you want your logo to make, make it be your display, and put a light on it and make it look like it's your display, not like it's a parked car.
Because if it's just a parked car, then it falls underneath some of the requirements. All cars that are gonna be worked on should be back behind the fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Anyway, so there's four vehicles over there right now. One of them looks like it might be a older collector-type vehicle, but the lights are off and the gates are shut. So the question is, why would cars continually be out? Because I think that was one of the things with Perkins' original CUP was, everything would be behind the fence. Till the motorcycle thing came up, and then we said, okay, well, they could park behind the house for some of that, so.
Well, we had, the parking out front was shown as parking spaces on the original site. And it was what we call proof of parking, so that they can pave it out later, data that they needed. So we definitely require it to be paved. If you want to put a condition in regarding, or I guess, maybe at this point, it's more of a code enforcement thing with Mr. Perkins to figure out what's happening, because it's, to my knowledge, completely unrelated to the FX Auto.
And that was kind of, the question came up the other day, that, you know, why were some of these things being brought in while the, the property itself has to be in compliance? The drainage pond, and the areas that if they're gonna be used for parking, had to be paved. So, separate from the FX Auto is, FX Auto vehicles all have to be behind the fence. And we've allowed that to be on unpaved gravel. But I think it's, again, that's why we try and take this when you, when you got it. If the property owner needs to get it cleaned up so he can lease out, this is our opportunity to take it, to get that done, so. The other question that, so, you'll deal with that as far as the cars? You'll ask that question, Liz?
Well, right, I mean, if they're operable, technically, they can be there unless you want to establish a condition otherwise, but because, you know, are you okay with that, that they're there in the evening, as long as they're operable or licensed?
Well, how would it affect other businesses if, if would we, would we apply the same condition to anybody else that's got a business? Could you just park cars, as long as they're licensed and operable, could you just park cars overnight?
Generally, we wouldn't regulate that unless it was, you know, where you're taking up space and it's otherwise needed, because it's kind of off-hours anyway. But if they never move, then that's questionable as to whether they are operable. So maybe we just add a condition that, you know, code enforcement works with the property owner on.
Let's see, two of them are basically new over there. One of them looks like it's that older collector car, but two of them look new.
The other, one of them looks like a collector's car, just up against the building. The other ones look newer, like somebody's driving them, but. And it could be, it could be, you know, they've got a project running overnight, or out of town, or.
I was just gonna say that, maybe they took the machine home, truck home.
But it's worth asking that question. The other question came up in Planning and Zoning is, it came through as an interim use permit, on one part of it, a conditional use permit. And, so in our ordinances, the distinction between the conditional use and the interim use permit in this, why, why would this be conditional use on a secondary lease to a primary commercial operation?
It's about the auto sale itself, not necessarily, I mean, either, either a sole facility or a facility such as this. I believe that the thinking is the reuse potential of a shop like that is common, I mean, more typical to be auto to auto, or motorcycle to auto, versus, you know, the IUP, where you may have things changing over, like the IUPs for outdoor storage would change more so if business changed. You know, screening a, screening a van versus screening a, you know, a huge crane or something, completely different.
Was the motorcycle an IUP?
No, it was a CP also. They had other things.
So does that?
IUPs at the time, so that device of use is shared over.
So does a motorcycle, doesn't exist anymore, does that CUP need to go away then?
That CUP? Well, right, if we vote that CUP.
So, Mr. Mayor.
So, I'll be.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
In regards to the, Mr. Stockman, in regards to the CUP for the motorcycle, have we started that process for revoking that, since the business is no longer there?
No, we have not started setting any letters at this time. We were waiting on some input.
So we potentially could have two CUPs?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
This, this is an issue that you've, that it's obvious that the business is no longer there. I would have thought that that process would have been started. It's, it's obvious it's not there, you're looking to put another one in. So it's, you'd have two CPs in the same location for two different functions. And I also am not comfortable with approving a CUP for a business where that business does not own, not operate. And are we even clear as to who has ownership or legal authority? Do we have documents that show Renee Perkins has that legal authority over that property? Are we accepting a signature from somebody that we don't know has any authority on the property?
No, I do not have any legal documents.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would think that our attorney should advise us as to whether it would be prudent if we moved forward with a degree for conditions with somebody that we don't know has control of that building.
But the applicant is Renee Perkins, who is the owner?
We don't know that. Dave Perkins owns the business.
I was verbally told, pardon?
Planner Stockman.
I was verbally told that we may have the decision-making power over there, so I don't have a legal document.
And, and Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Yeah, not to be flippant, but I can tell you I'm a Queen England too. So, and totally have some documentation, world. We don't even know if the owner of the. So, and totally half the documentation world, we don't even know if the owner of the building, who is Dave Perkins, if he is agreeable to this. We're, we're taking that, taking the word of a, of a third party. Right, and your brother, but I got two brothers too that don't know if they're great. I just think legally, we need to make sure we know that we have the responsible party agreeing to these changes.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Do we do this with everybody who wants to get a CUP, make sure that they're the, the, I mean, why don't we trust this person? I mean, what's the question here? I don't get it. What, make it clear to me why we, we aren't doing this to anybody else, so why aren't we trusting this? If verbally, this fellow, what's his name?
Renee.
The man.
Oh, Dave.
If verbally Dan has said that Renee has the power, why aren't we trusting that? Because we would probably if anybody else did it. I mean, I just to clarify why this is a question.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To Councilmember Blake, I'm not aware, and I could be wrong, but I'm not aware of a situation, I can't remember a situation, where we have an applicant that doesn't own the building.
Well, if that's his wife, why isn't she the applicant?
Except we make sure that the person signing the application has the authority to do so.
So, so Linda, for your sake.
Uh-uh, this doesn't make sense.
Renee is a guy.
Oh, I thought Renee was his wife.
No, Renee's a guy.
Okay.
And his brother started the business and bought the property. So everything we have is in his brother's name.
Okay, I thought Renee was his wife. That was the whole thing.
No. No, Renee's his brother.
Okay.
And, and so the, the question comes in is typically when you do a CUP, you deal with the property owner.
Yes, okay, I get it now. I just didn't understand.
And the question is, well, Planner Stockman is saying he has authorization to run the business.
Okay.
That doesn't necessarily mean he owns the business.
So we have to get something in writing that says.
And so, what I'm understanding, Councilmember Rainville to be saying is, we should check with the attorney to see are we, are we open to can of worms if we do this where we authorize something to a non-owner?
Right.
If, if Dave still owns it, Dave should be the one that signs off on it. If Dave is not capable of that, and Renee has now power of attorney and authorization, then it's perfectly legal to say Dave runs the company, Dave, Dave has the authority to do whatever he wants over there, so we would change our paperwork to say Renee is the responsible party and therefore.
Okay.
And so what's happening is you have somebody, you're not sure if they have authority other than his own word that he's running things, signing off to now a third party to run a business in there where there already is a CUP existing for another business in that same spot.
Okay, I understand. I mean, the whole idea that, I thought that was his wife.
No.
So that made it.
Renee is his brother.
I had.
Well, why wouldn't, if, if Mark is not, Mark is the business owner, if the CUP is to his name and he doesn't do the upgrades, whether he has an agreement with Dave or Renee or not, if he doesn't do the upgrades that's listed in the CUP, you take the CUP away.
It doesn't go into effect, correct?
It doesn't.
Mr. Mayor?
I mean, it's, he's leasing a property. You don't necessarily, I mean, my wife leases a building, she doesn't go to the building owner to decide what she's doing with their business.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
So, yeah, we have done, we have numerous situations where we've issued CUPs or IUPs to tenants. A tenant can rent the whole building, lease the whole building, part of the building. It's the use that we're looking at and authorizing. It's always required, yes, that the landowner, the building owner sign the application. So, yes, if you want proof, we can get some proof to figure out, you know, a legal document. I trust in Renee's work, but will, you know, I'd be glad to revisit that.
So who's the owner? Frelick?
So Dave Perkins.
Dave, Dave Perkins.
Owns it.
Well, he started it, and he's in ill health, and he now lives in our estate.
Oh.
So now his brother is running the operation.
Okay. And how is this Frelick involved?
Oh, so he's the one that rents space in the back to run his auto repair back there.
Okay.
And, and that space in the back already has a CUP because Dave Perkins' daughter's significant other was running a motorcycle business in that same spot. So that's, Councilmember Rainville's saying we should, we should get rid of the CUP for the motorcycle, because now we're going to have two CUPs in the same square footage in that building.
Okay.
So the, the daughter and the significant other are gone, they're no longer living in the house, the motorcycle business is gone, and Mr. Frelick's been running a repair business there for about two years.
Mr. Mayor?
So Mr. Frelick's just renting the space from Renee Perkins.
And, and Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
And I don't, I, I'm not sure to cast doubt on the legitimacy of Renee Perkins, that the thing, his brother's estate or his trust. I just, as a, want to, as a city, make sure that we are doing, that we are legally protected in the case that something went happened between family members, and now I've got to say you didn't have authority, whatever. But as a city, it's, it's our job as elected officials to make sure that the city is protected. And so I would request that the attorney, our city attorney, provide to Lori, strike, what it is that we need to be able to be protected in this situation.
Well, I also think that, that we always have to be careful of precedent, that if, if it's been the practice that you're always, you always have the signature of the property owner, and in this case, we didn't, and again, we set precedent, that somebody else comes in and says, well, you didn't do it here, why are you doing it here?
Okay, okay.
I mean, I, I, I don't want to be a, a pain in, in the, you know, but this business has been operating for two years without this. I, I don't see a problem with what Mr. Frelick's trying to do there, once we get the signage all figured out. But I do think that we don't want to set a negative precedent either. And so, what's, what's the, the best, most respectful way to get this cleared up?
I would say we can table this till next month. We'll get the paperwork we need and we will address some of the issues and try to get some answers. The, regarding the revocation of the CUP, Ms. Rainville, since I was well aware of that, but because we are taking on this process to send letters out, we have multiple properties in the city where it's very obvious that businesses are no longer present. So we should give Perkins family the same respect as the others for, you know, sort of a group raise, if you want to call it that. If you want to make it cleaner, we can advertise it. You know, between now and next month, if you want to do it at the same time, we can advertise it and just, you know, we do, take that out of this escrow, as, you know, a minimal amount to process that or create that, a public hearing notice, or you can wait and do it with a bunch of others later.
So I, I can understand the point of saying that, excuse me, Mary, I'll finish here first. I can understand the point of not wanting to have two CUPs at the same location at the same time for different businesses. But what you're saying is if, if we have a number of businesses that are pretty obviously not existing there anymore, and we put one public notice in, that's going to reduce the cost to whoever. Now, now if those businesses don't exist, those people aren't in town anymore, we're absorbing that cost anyway.
Right.
Councilmember Rainville.
So, my, my, I have a question. So, this motorcycle company used to be in there, the CUP was given to them, they're no longer there, how do we bill the gravitation of that CUP? Do we bill it to Perkins, or do we try to track this other guy down?
Yeah, it's attached to the property, which is owned by the Perkins, so, right. I, what I'm saying is we have an escrow, Mary, for the current application, it wouldn't take much to, you know, we could, if you wanted to do it at the same time, advertise the public hearing, you know, we have a fairly standard format for a revocation, but all in all, it's going to be less expensive to do it as a group. But if you feel strongly, I mean, he's already got like two or three IUPs and a variance and a whole bunch of other stuff over there, but anyway, whatever your preference is, we'll do.
I agree with you. Councilmember Rainville.
I, I guess my question would be that we not, that we combine them, but we not, you know, let it not be addressed.
Not be what?
So what, what I'm hearing you say, Councilmember Rainville, is go ahead and do it with the others, just make sure it gets done.
That would be correct, Mr. Mayor. Can I, and then, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
So last, um, Stockman, one of the things I want to say thank you about is, in your findings, you've said that they are not allowed to park over in the City Hall parking lot. So I appreciate that, the part of the facts in finding.
Yeah, you're welcome. They did admit to that and agreed not to do it any further.
All right, so at this point, some, some things to clean up. The suggestion was to table until next month.
I do, Mr. Mayor, go ahead, Jason.
Councilmember Blake.
No, Jason first. He, he's been trying to talk. Let Jason.
Councilmember Alders.
So we're going to clarify what the signage needs to look like.
Yep.
We're going to get some information on the cars that are parked on the north side of the building.
Right.
And then we're going to understand from our attorney, can Renee sign off on this or not, or does Dave need to sign off on it?
Right. Legal, yep, that's right.
Those, those are the three actions?
And we'll double check, yeah, if we need a legal document to allow Renee to sign, we'll verify what we need.
Okay, and then.
I can tell you that one right now. You can hit your phone, it's right there. That's the website.
That's what?
Secretary of State website, Rainville, this is on, is that good?
It's right over there.
Juke Cody.
How, how do you know?
I'm President Rainville.
Okay.
Your what?
I'm also President Rainville.
He's friends with Renee, he checked through.
Secretary of State's website.
Secretary of State, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to say this, that, okay, we just had this big, long discussion, and she's going to go back and she's going to have to ask all these questions and have more hoops for them to go through, which is right. But let's remember this, when we, when people say, she just makes it impossible for us to change things in, in the city. We have to realize that we're sending her back now with more things for them to do, which might aggravate them, say, how many hoops do I have to pass, jump through before this can pass? But it's starting right here with us.
Well, and.
And, okay, I just want to say, it's not that a lot of what Liz has to do is go back with things that we're demanding that be changed or checked or redone. And so I, I just see, I'm just pointing out for everyone to see on the camera as well, that there are a lot of things that she's doing that's coming from a lot of us who understand there's more things we need to look at here, Liz, would you go back and do this and do this and check on this? And so she does, and then she gets the heat for it, because she's the one who they're saying, she makes it impossible for us to do things. No, she's just following the rules that have to be done for us to do, run a community in a proper way and make the, and keep the regulations that are good for our community. I just want to point that out.
Okay, and, and I do want to say that, you know, that, that some of the issues that come up, we don't even know about.
Right, but these are ones we do.
And, and in this case, as Mr. Cody, you know, Liz can do the same thing, check Secretary of State, who owns it? We don't have to, you know, we, we're just saying, from our standpoint, somebody has to prove it's legal, whether it goes back to the attorney, common sense says, Secretary of State's office, let's check it out and we can go there. So it doesn't necessarily have to go back to, and that was my point, being respectful to the Perkins. Why are, you know, why are we putting them through hoops if we don't need to, if there's other ways of doing this? And my way is always going to the attorney. I didn't think to go to the Secretary of State's website. But, but to just say, is there a way of doing this, saying, yep, it's legal, he's got the authorization to sign off on this, he's, he's the authorized party, we're not doing it. So whatever the most respectful way of doing that, without putting people through, through the hoops.
So now that we know that he is the chief executive officer, can we not vote on him?
Who's speaking?
Jason.
The, the person that spoke before was, was Jim Cody, he's in the, the last person left in the audience here, who happens to be friends with Mr. Perkins?
Yes, I know him personally.
So he knows him and he just, he checked on the Secretary of State's website and the principal party. What, what does it actually say there?
CEO, so?
Chief Executive Officer Renee Perkins.
So Mr. Cody pointed that out to us, and Jason was, was asking the question, now that we know that, what do we need to do?
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman.
Yeah, I would suggest with that knowledge, we could simply just add a couple of conditions regarding that all cars in the front park need to be licensed and operable, and that they create a, you know, if we had allowed a, an T car.
An intentional sign.
Yeah, make it intentional, and it could be sideways, the other way, in one of the parking stalls or raised up like Mr. Dreambird does.
Yeah.
And then we could just be done with it.
Yes, simplify.
And can I just add one more thing? Thank you, Linda, for your nice comments. I have been, always have been and always will be willing, this is part of my job, to do some of this dirty work, if you want to call it that, that's what I do, I work with people. Some are easier than others, it's just the way it goes, totally fine with it. And I appreciate though, I mean, this is, in some respects, what you're supposed to do is ask questions. You have to be clear on what the application is and what's happening in order to make a decision on it. So, I mean, I do respect that the council that asks questions.
And they're good questions. I mean, they're very thoughtful questions.
One, one of the things you find when you're dealing with planning and zoning stuff is the precedent really will bite you. If you're not paying attention up front, somebody always finds that one where you made the exception and they, they come back and.
Yep.
We've got a parking lot on the corner where everything happened. We were trying to be nice one time and, and they came back and said, but you did this.
Yep.
And, and people find out about it, so.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so, so we're going to, at this, Councilmember Rainville, Councilmember Rainville.
I, I, I guess, I guess, I don't understand who, who worked at what.
So, in, in the audience here tonight, our, our one lone member here is Mr. Jim Cody, who happens to be a personal acquaintance of Renee Perkins, and so he went on the, while we're sitting here, he went on his phone and went to Secretary of State's site and checked out who's the chief executive officer for that organization, for that business.
All right, so, so Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Okay, but who, and I'm not trying to make trouble or anything like that, I just want to make sure that the city is protected, all right? That's my ultimate goal, is the city is protected. And this is something when it came in, the application said property owner, Dave Perkins, and now a different Perkins is signing off on it, that, that could have been questioned from day one, in, in my mind, why, that, that's a discrepancy, and that should have been looked at on day one, why? Why that didn't happen, I, you know, I don't know, but I, again, I just wanna make sure that we're protected.
So I guess that the question...
Without having that documentation, I, I, I cannot vote on this without knowing that we are protected, we know who the owner is, it's, it's, we, we have documentation showing that. And I appreciate the gentleman in the audience looking it up, but I don't have that in front of me, um, and, so, I'm not comfortable with it.
So the, the question still exists then, in your mind, does the CEO of the corporation satisfy the legal requirements of the property owner?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So that, that question still exists, and so that's legitimate to, to put to the attorney. If the CEO has this authority, is it the equivalent of the property owner? Because that is, that has been our standard in all of these CUPs, you have to have the property owner sign off. I mean, we have the one where the gentleman was in the audience tonight, and if all the property owners don't sign off, he can't proceed with his IUP or CUP. And, and if we, if we go around that, then he's gonna come back and say, I've got authority, but I don't have the, I don't have the owner's signature. I've got the authority, I'm running the property.
So you're back to square one?
I think we're making too much of this. It's the CEO of the company.
Right.
I mean, I sign off for stuff for Catapult all the time because I'm the facility manager.
Right, I, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Planner Stockman.
I was just gonna say, like, Volunteers of America, for instance, you know, Julie Manor, she's the CEO, she's gonna sign on the application with if and when they apply for the school IUP. I mean, that's owned by who knows who, you know, I mean, you're not gonna have, sometimes you have ten people that own a property and one person's authorized to sign, or one or two, you know? But anyway, I'll do whatever you, what you wanna.
Well, can we vote, or do we have, or do we just...
Well, we, we talked about tabling until the other questions were answered.
Can't we vote with the, uh, conditions on intentional signage of the car and a condition on what's on the north side of the lot and move on?
Yeah, can we do that, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, you, you can do it, I, I like the idea of tabling it until we get the answers, but, and like I said, it's not gonna change the operation of the business, it's been going for two years already, so waiting until we get the answers isn't gonna hurt.
That's true, it's not delaying, you know?
Okay, okay.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
Uh, so, Councilmember Alders, you can do whatever you want to in your business environment, but government is different, and as an elected official, our job is to make sure that the city is protected, and in the end run, maybe we are, but I don't see that in front of me. And so, I wanna make sure the city, uh, protected because it's our name that goes to the law if anything is wrong.
I understand that, Mary, I also understand.
Councilmember Alders.
It's the CEO of the company, and we're dragging out a discussion on forty minutes for a business that has run successfully for two years, and we can easily vote on it with the two conditions and move on, versus waiting another month.
Well, be my guest and I'll be voting now.
But I, I think to the, the point that, that Councilmember Rainville makes is, we do need to, to be aware of setting precedent. And if the attorney says CEO is fine, that applies in all these, these, for all these ordinances that you have, that's clear, we've never asked a question before, because we've always had the property owner sign off. And so it's not going to, uh, impede the business that it's, it's been operating, we're not gonna shut him down until he gets it, it's been operating as it is, but this way we have the question answered and we know going forward what that is for all future cases. So I think it's worth asking it, when something comes up, we need to get a clear answer and then we'll know for the future.
Mr. Mayor?
We're not speculating. Councilmember Greenberg.
All right, so, I agree, let's table it. What I'd like to get then is what Mary is asking for, that legal document or whatever it is from the CEO saying, yep, I know about this, this is okay to proceed. The other thing I'd like to know, um, is just, uh, the discussion that we had about that car, the red rusted car, and just, uh, present to him, counsel would like to know, um, would like to see you do something different from that car and give us your plan.
Okay.
Say, we want something different. Right now, it basically looks like it got parked there thirty years ago and hasn't moved, and we've allowed that because it was your sign, but now that you're getting an official sign, something else has to be done with that car. All the way to the end of dressing it up, putting it on a pedestal with all sorts of rocks and fencing around it, to the high end, to the low end of at least park it on that dirt, or park it this way, or something.
Okay.
And then say, counsel would like to see you do something with that car. Exactly how much, something different than just sitting there, um, looking like it died.
All right, so that's your motion to table?
Yeah, table with those conditions that we just said. Um, if he's already been operating for two years, he can wait another month, that way we can get covered as a city and... Yeah, and then move on to the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
This is gonna tell midnight.
I would, if no one else has, I will second that.
Right, and so we'll get a clarification from the attorney in that, whether CEO versus landowner, property owner? Is that the equivalent?
Yes.
So we know going forward.
Correct.
All right, so we have motion and second. Motion by Councilmember Rainburg, second by Councilmember Rainville, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to table?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries. All right, so, twenty after nine, a couple of things to go through here. Uh, Liz, we have a draft ordinance which we just received, um...
No, you worked out the ordinance and the architectural standards, I think. The ordinance isn't very long, it's just, uh, copies of parts of the, uh, zoning ordinance that I passed so you can understand the whole context of the thing, but, um, talk to you a bit, um... It would be nice to get at least some input on this, um, it still has to go back to P and Z, so just the general format's fine, then you'll be looking at it again. Just any, uh, major suggestions? Would you like them to vote, do we intend, or does everybody understand what, what being quoted?
Go ahead.
Okay, so...
You're missing your synopsis.
Quick synopsis is basically establishing a grading landscaping and construction escrow, so that when you have, um, new residential structures or any new, um, commercial or industrial uses or additions, they put up an escrow so that we can monitor the site related to erosion control, grading, we check it periodically throughout the construction process to be sure there's no issues. Um, the city has to adopt a, a new MS four plan this year, um, and they're, they're being, coming increasingly titty, detailed about what has to be addressed, and will likely need, um, Shane's office to assist with some of these erosion control type and grading inspections. So having this escrow there to pay for your staff and to have a bit of a incentive for especially the residential homes, to get their, um, seeded or sotted lawns in within a reasonable period of time. And that they just don't let it sit there and be rolled away, and that they meet what was approved as part of the grading plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Blake.
So we haven't had anything, we haven't had something like this before?
No, I've been checking sites before we issue a certificate of occupancy, just to be sure there's no major issue, but this would take the place of that, and, um, I think just the money incentive and having that escrow there for inspection would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
So Liz, what's a typical escrow gonna be if we add another $2,000 to it? If you're building a house, you're doing an escrow for...
Oh, there's really nothing that's part of a building permit, so as long as they're, they apply this for a building permit and they pay for that building permit fee, there's no other escrow. So as long as, you know, they call for inspections, oh, you know how that process works, and as long as they're making progress in meeting the building code, so that's different than, you know, some of the outside things, and that's kinda why we are looking to establish this, to have a little bit more control about the outside, whereas a building is looking at the structure.
So I, I think that, that Jason's question was, they're already putting an escrow down for the building, and now this is for, for landscaping, there'll be another $2,000, $1,000 to $2,000 in additional escrow.
There's no escrow for the structure itself, other than, you know, you pay for the building permit and you have to meet certain building code factors, but there's no escrow there. You pay the building permit fee, multiple fees, but there's no escrow there, you don't get your cert, your, sort of your incentive, you know, to get your certificate of occupancy, you have to do P and Z to get to that point, so...
Okay, so you, you have your, your fees, and this escrow, if you meet the conditions, you would get returned, so it's upfront money. You get a portion of it returned that isn't used in expense for you to inspect.
Correct. And it's there in case somebody's not doing what you're supposed to, then they lose it all if the city has to go in, correct an erosion issue, you know, maybe put silt fence up or silt rolls or do something to, if you've got runoff going onto the neighbor's property...
So, so let's go to the grading landscaping and construction escrow, new single-family uses.
Right.
Uh, we have two properties going in over here in 201st, each of those would have to put a $2,000 per lot escrow, and then the city would inspect, and so the inspection charges, inspection cost would come out of that escrow, and then anything, if they weren't in compliance, would come out of that escrow up to $2,000.
No, we would ask them, we would, if we saw something that was out of compliance, they would have an opportunity to repick, repair or fix it.
Okay, so, but in, in the event that they didn't...
Right.
The city gets stuck with it, we have that escrow to...
Right, if they're totally negligent, right, if they, and then we need to do something.
So do we know what typical inspection cost would be? How much of that $2,000 escrow would be eaten up in inspection?
I could ask Shane what he, to get a better idea of that, what he's doing in other communities, to see what that kinda ends up to be, or how much is typically given back.
Has it been a problem?
Well, I would say at least half of the homes I look at had, you know, some erosion issues, I don't know why, you know, the establishment of turf and seed is not necessarily a priority. Now, I just, you know, because we have big lots, and in some cases, it's not an issue because that, if you've got the surrounding area that's established with lawn grass, that kinda acts as your silt fence and your, you know, you can keep that erosion on your property, but in other cases, you're close to the neighbor or you're close to the street and you've got this stuff running off, so remember, this is partly, um, a result of state requirements related to the MS four requirements and the NPPEF, pollutant discharge, there's so many state and federal requirements that cities have to...
This is another, another state, the MS four and the pollution things are unfunded mandates. The city is obligated to...
Comply.
Comply with the, the stormwater pollution prevention, and, uh, but we're not getting any money to do it. So all these ponds, and I know Shane's brought this up before, anybody who doesn't properly, fence properly, uh, seed over these areas, it gets into our ponds and that's just something that's gonna bite us later because we're stuck with cleaning up the ponds.
Right.
So you're, you mentioned that part of this was because of the, the more stringent MS four requirements, um... My concern is it's just another escrow that gets eaten up.
Yeah, can we not just tie it to their building permit? I mean, these are the regulations that they have to comply with, and otherwise they don't get signed up on their building permit?
Well, the problem is, we can't. We don't know how many inspections, we don't know if there's gonna be problems. The building official doesn't want any part of that, and now the, the NPPEF, NPA is requiring that people that inspect all have to be trained for what to look for and yada, yada, so it's really becoming, you know, somewhat of a headache, to be honest, I mean, I would agree, it's another...
Cost.
Okay, so, so the, the question is, because now we're approaching nine thirty and we've took out things to do here, so, um, what action needs to be done in this, what direction do you need from us right now?
How, how about, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I don't...
Planner Stockman.
Uh, you know, how about we, we try to provide some additional background information, I talk to Shane some more, get some numbers, should we just, you know, present us a P and Z and talk about it there, or do you want it to come back to you first?
I think, I think we should, we should have it come back to us. I'd like to know what the typical inspection would be, if I'm, if I'm about to build a house and I see this coming down the road, uh, you know, you throw on, you know, material costs that have increased $35,000 per household in a year's time, you know, one more escrow, one more fee, I'd like to know how much that escrow I'm likely to get back, and what, what am I getting for that? And I think we should have that discussion before taking it to P and Z for, for a hearing, so.
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Uh, Planner Stockman. Who typically does these inspections now?
We don't do, well, I've been doing the inspection before certificate of occupancy, to be sure there's no major issues, like one time, somebody, um, didn't have their drain field seeded and stabilized, there were these baby rats running over it and around it, things like that, I mean, major things. But, you know, think of this almost as a past to be again, because if we're required to do these inspections, it's either the city came for it or the resident came for it. And again, you know, it's the, the burden goes on the person that's generating the activities.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to tell those people what that burden might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Right, but right now, it's you who are doing the inspection because our city inspector doesn't wanna do this because it's not building, it's...
Right, they don't do...
Dirt and lawn and runoff and all that.
Exactly.
So you find yourself in the position where you're being the inspector, the state doesn't wanna send someone out to inspect this?
No, it's the city's responsibility.
No, that's what I said, it's the state's unfunded mandate, you will do it, but we're not gonna give you any...
Okay, so, um, so someone is, knows that they're supposed to do this, but then they Okay, so, um, so someone is, knows that they're supposed to do this, but then they don't do it. We put an escrow in there that forces them to go, wait, I just lost two grand. Maybe I better do this and then I'll get it back?
Well, right, we...
She doesn't know how much, she didn't know how much they get back.
Whatever it would be.
We would certainly give them opportunity to do the work themselves or correct the problem before we're gonna just go in and...
Right, but the whole point of the escrow is to, um, get compliance from the homeowner. It's an incentive, there, all these fancy words, wonderful. It's to get them to comply.
Right.
So, if they don't, they lose that investment. But then, it's incumbent upon the city to go in there and fix those issues if they don't fix it?
Correct.
So, it has to get done either way, there's no squirreling out of it.
Right, exactly.
So, you think $1,000, my land, my yard, done? It's a pretty good deal.
He's saying that's worth losing the escrow to have somebody else do the landscaping.
Hey, we could set it up the other way where it's, here's the inspection fee. If it doesn't pass, you've got 60 days to comply or we're gonna farm it out and send it to the bill.
Well, that's...
And I think Liz is being proactive in saying, if we just put this up front, we're covered and we don't have to chase down their money 'cause people don't like paying money. Once they're moved in and they're, think they're home free and all of a sudden, they start getting charges because it's eroding and it's not, the seed isn't taking and you're saying, you need to comply, give me a thousand bucks. And they're like, no, I'm not gonna do that. So, if you have it up front already, they're more apt to comply. So, I see Liz's, I see Liz's point of view.
And pardon me, Mr. Mayor?
Well, to Mr. Cody's point, if for $2,000 bucks I can get you to landscape my yard, I'll take that. I think what Councilmember Alders was saying is, we'll take the inspection fee out front and we'll, we'll absorb that, but then we'll give you X number of days to get it done. If you don't, then we'll bill you for it, that would be a different thing. You know, that would be, you know, something you assess in the taxes.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's like when we have to demo a building. You either take the building down, the city will, but it's gonna go on your taxes if you don't pay it.
Right.
You're, you're gonna pay the cost either way 'cause we're not gonna give you cheap landscaping.
Trying to figure out, uh, someone that comes in, it's like, they're paying us, you know, if they do like a lot split and they're doing surveying and they're doing a plat and all of that fees that go along with that. And then, we hit them with, here's another two grand that we're gonna hold your money until your whole project is done, that they may not appreciate, or it's another two grand.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to look at, the whole comprehensive thing. And that's, that's part of, you know, this, if we get to it here, the, the P and Z question and the lot splits. I think that was part of the question was, we, we are not communicating effectively what the total cost is. And it seems like these things keep popping up, here's another $2,000 escrow, here's another, here's another, here's another. And, and it would be nice to say, I would like the total transparency of, hey, we're gonna...
Yeah, here it is, show it to me.
We're gonna inspect your place twice for the lawn. It's gonna cost you 350 bucks 'cause that's our cost. And if it doesn't pass MPCA requirements for runoff, you've got 60 days to correct it and if you don't correct it, we'll correct it for you and it's gonna go on your tax statement.
There you go, that looks, that sounds better.
But I, I do think, you know, because we're gonna start seeing more building out here and I think it's incumbent upon us to, to put information together that says, in addition to all the additional costs for building materials and everything else, here's what the state requirements, the city requirements are that you're going to encounter and the approximate or estimated cost is. Because that's something people should know ahead of time.
So, Mr. Mayor?
So, Councilmember Alders.
So, Liz, today, if someone builds a house in Nelvin, are they, there's no requirements to put up a silt fence or anything around the excavation site?
Oh, no, we require that. We're very stringent on that being up before they break ground. Uh, and around all the stockpiles, ditches, or...
Okay.
So, that is...
But this is specific to like, once the great, final rating is done, to prevent erosion control?
Right, make, the majority is just getting that seed established or...
Gotcha.
Sodding, yeah.
And that's M for requirements versus us coming down on...
Right.
Our team.
And, and, you know, item B there is for escrow for separate grading permits. You know, additions, in-ground pools, accessory buildings, any disturbing the land in larger than 10,000 square feet. So, it's, you know, it's other grading projects as well. But I think, I think we need to have a better understanding of the potential cost and how this fits in. It'd be nice to know that, you know, again, understanding all the fees and, and permit costs and escrows that, that somebody's building a house is gonna encounter. We should know that upfront. Here's, here's the minimum we're talking about and here's what could cause that to be higher. Here's typical cases we've encountered, it's gonna make your house potentially higher. Because I think this has been part of the frustration of, of people that are going through the process is, you know, Linda, you were saying, part of it is we require more. But, but a part of it is DNR requires and the state requires.
Right, 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 right.
And we need to know what that is, so the homeowner, because otherwise, they feel like they're getting nickelled and dimed or thousands of dollars at a time here. That $1,000 surprises, $10,000 surprises are, are upsetting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Okay, so when I built my house 15 years ago, Lori, I don't know if things have changed, but I gotta pack it before I started building my house. It was this thick and there was 22 steps in there I had to achieve in order to get final occupancy. In that 22-step process that Nelvin had determined for me, a couple of them said $2,000 for trail fee, $2,000 for park fee. I knew I had to pay out of the nose just by, by building my house. I knew it was there, it was stated, I paid the check. I grumbled under my breath, but I gave it. It was just spelled out, the price was there. You wanna live here, this is what you have to do.
We do that now?
And it took me 11 months to go through this 22-step process 'cause each one is massive if you build your own place. Anyways, if this was put in there, go, when I got to the silt fence, I knew it wasn't Nelvin talking to me. I knew it was Big Brother DNR talking to me, you need your silt fence. So, if we put in the lingo, the MSPCA or whatever it is that wants your non-erosion or whatever compliance and it's stuck in there, you know, that would be part of that communication, that would be part of that bill, that would be part of the, I know ahead of time what I'm getting into. And then, we could throw in there, by the way, if you don't comply, you get nailed. Or it might be like the park and trail or you're gonna get nailed, whatever, it's two grand, anyway.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stock.
No, I like identifying the source of the requirement and then, did you split off some land too?
Uh, yeah, so I split off five acres from the 200.
Okay, I thought you must have looked your van park and trail.
Okay.
All right, so...
Great idea.
You, you know what you need, Liz, before we bring you back to us?
Yeah, we'll get some more information and bring it back next month.
All right, it's 20 to 10. Can we, uh, sit on the architectural design guidelines? That's a bigger packet.
Yeah, we're gonna need, uh, almost a work session for that kind of thing.
Yep.
Which one of these seem to be done in short fashion? The farmer's market RCA, the cell tower?
Well, that's, that's just, the, the cell tower is the one we got tonight. And, and again, that's a discussion item. But if you know where the cell tower is, that's right by the fire station. And right now, there's an easement in yellow, if you see on the little packet that's in front of you. There's an easement in yellow and they wanna go 25 feet wider.
So, if you look at the last graphic, like the third page, and the red and the green passing, that's the best view I can have. So, is that the only graphic Mary's got?
And, and so, so if you think...
Yeah.
Red is proposed?
Correct.
And, and what you don't have in there, if you look on page two, existing easements in red, um, we now have an addition on the fire station in white there. So, the fire station is the green building with the blue dot in the middle. We have an addition on the fire station and there's going to be a sidewalk going around there because the egress door, the fire station is on the east side facing the, um, recycling center. And we have to put a sidewalk there with a handicap accessible to that door. And so, what they're looking at is 25 feet wider, puts them pretty close to that building and where the sidewalk's gonna be. Now, this is an easement and they wanna put a transformer, a generator, I'm sorry. Generator?
Generator.
Generator down along our pathway near the ball field there. So, what I was telling Liz beforehand, we'd like to know a little more about the generator. Is this gonna be an emergency generator similar to what we have in the fire station as a backup unit? Or is this a generator that's gonna be running outside our park area there? And, uh, right now, to put it on the north side of that fenced area would impede our garage opening there. There's no room on the west side. There is room on the east side, but they would need easement to get there and we do have a septic system on that side of the building. So, we need to know a little bit more about the generator. We need to know now that the fire station addition is on there with the sidewalk, what does that do to us? We asked the fire, Assistant Fire Chief to, to look at the parking 'cause typically, uh, before that addition was on there, that's where the firefighter is parked. So, we have to take a look at the parking. If we have a full crew in there and we have 20 cars, uh, where are those cars parking? So, there's some questions that need to be answered on that now that we know where the fire station and the sidewalk are going to be. What is the generator? How often might it be running? What kind of pad is that gonna be on?
Mr. Mayor, it looks like it's awful close to the ball field.
Yeah, yeah, that's that path running right next to the ball field there. So, it would be right outside the...
Yeah.
So, I guess we need a little more information on it.
Okay.
I don't know what, right now, we're leasing them all the square footage inside the fence. And it sounds like this generator would be outside the fence.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stock.
So, the 20 feet existing is with T-Mobile and is tied to the fenced, uh, cell tower area. The proposed easement would be through center point for the, um, power and would be kept separate at attorney group's request, um, and under, you know, different jurisdictions. So, that blue line you see on this graphic is the existing power that runs to the back of the fire station there. And Mary can see it on her graphic, which is a thin green line that runs from that public road or whatever you wanna call it, down around the back of the fire station. And then, the little stub off to the fenced area where the cell tower is, is really all they're adding. But yes, I could get more detail on the type of generator. And their intention was to basically kinda go up to that door of the fire station because they currently go up to the door on our recycling center.
Yeah, I don't think anyone knew there was an easement there 'cause we put things in there all the time.
Yeah.
I don't think it's that critical. I mean, they're not gonna be accessing us that often.
Well, we just need to know what...
Ideally, the generator could go inside the fence, right?
I don't think there's any room.
Yeah, they were saying it wasn't big enough in there, but all can be...
We don't know how big the generator is either, so, so you'll get more information on that 'cause we just got this tonight anyway, so...
Um, Ms. Strick suggested possibly if I can get the information that we put this on that special meeting on the 24th, that I'll give you...
Special meeting on the 24th.
Is that for a public hearing?
Public hearing, yeah.
Oh, is that confirmed?
Yeah, we both got that.
I didn't get that. Did I? I got a request and then when I tried to respond to it, the computer was down.
Six o'clock or six thirty, I think.
Is that this month?
Yeah.
They're confirmed at the last council meeting.
Yeah, I wrote it down.
I don't have it.
We had, we, at the last council meeting, we had the 13th.
I have the 13th.
Oh, and then we, yeah, so afterwards, we...
And then a request came out and said the 13th, we missed the, the filing deadline on the notice.
Yeah, so it's gonna be the 24th.
And so, the question was, can we do the 24th? And I, when I tried to reply, the computer was down and I never heard back whether...
All right, so Monday, the 20, May, May the 24th?
May 24th.
May 24th.
Starting at six.
Which is a Monday.
You get that, Mary?
I, I, I think I had gathered that we're on the 24th, but, you know, there was no information on it.
Okay, so it sounds like the road hearings are confirmed on the 24th. Though I think Linda knew that and the rest of us are, the rest of us are looking at a day's...
I imagine what I did was, when she requested, I just assumed that that was the choice, so I wrote it in my book.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we, we are now confirming the 24th. I'm assuming notices went out accordingly, right?
Yes.
So, the residents know that. So, the 24th at six o'clock and seven o'clock?
Yes.
Six o'clock it starts?
Well, there's one, which one's first?
The Ebony and Garnet is first and Rogers Lake is at seven.
Okay, fine, that's...
And so, Liz is asking...
I'm ahead of everybody, I wrote it down.
Linda's on it.
Yeah, I'm on top of everything.
And Liz, you're asking if this can come up as, as a third meeting for that night?
I'm just, it was just a suggestion, uh, if it's a, if it's straightforward and everybody has a chance to review it early enough, it's up, I mean, whatever you wanna do.
This one, you sent us this thick one?
No, the, the cell tower.
Oh, the cell tower, oh, okay.
Yeah, the cell tower. And then, we also have Josh's grading agreement for, um, his brand new story. But that's, yeah, we can do that later.
Okay, that's on here too?
Well, if you can get us the information for the, uh, the cell tower, you guys wanna do a third meeting that night after the public hearings.
And my confirmation may have bounced back with the issues we were having because I sent it right before I left on vacation. And then, our system was down, our emails for three days were down.
Yeah, okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, neither the cell tower or the grading permit would take very long.
Okay, well, let's do it.
Let's do it then.
I don't think that, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
I don't think this RCA recycling or farmer's market's gonna take long. Can't we just quickly go through that?
So, let me just confirm that you wanna do, uh, Monday, May 24th. After the two road hearings, you wanna take on the cell tower, which Liz will get us information on and see what the, yeah, the office grading permit. And then, uh, the grading permit for name brand?
Right.
All right, you get that, Mary?
Yeah, I'll have to cancel my May 24th. I had never gotten a confirmation back, so I'll just cancel what I have that day, so...
That's not your surgery day, is it?
No, my surgery is the week prior.
Oh, Lord, you won't even be able to probably be there.
Oh, you had a, you had something else scheduled for the 24th?
Well, Lori, we, we got the initial email from Ms. Strick. I had said I was open, um, I preferred sooner rather than later, uh, for that date. Um, and I never heard anything back, so I had an opportunity to, uh, commit to something else. So, I will contact that person and let them know I'm unavailable.
Sorry about that. All right. Recycling center employee.
Mayor, Council, I, uh, put in the RCA for recycling center employee. Um, I, we discussed at the last meeting the possibility of 20 hours per week. And so, I proposed... And so I proposed some hours with Tuesdays noon to 8:00 p.m., Thursdays noon to 8:00 p.m., and Saturdays nine to 1:00 p.m. But I also received some additional suggestions from council member Alders, which may be some good options as well. Possibly doing the 20 hours Saturday, 8:00 to noon, Sunday, 8:00 to noon, Monday being closed, and then Tuesdays through Fridays being open 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. So that's another option to break up those 20 hours per week. I'm also recommending an hourly rate of $15 an hour and not to exceed the 20 hours a week.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayville.
Could I ask Ms. Strick to repeat that, both the, the days and hours recommended by, by, by council member Alders?
Sure. The hours that council member Alders suggested were possibly Saturdays 8:00 to noon, Sundays 8:00 to noon, Mondays being closed, and then Tuesdays through Friday, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
I'd say we make Sunday closed and make Monday open.
Yeah, I don't like Sunday open either.
So do what you're doing except switch Monday and Sunday.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayville.
I also have some options that would bring us up to 23 hours.
Okay.
That would leave our Tuesdays and Thursdays where they're at from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That extends the Saturday hours from either 8:00 to 3:00 or 9:00 to 4:00 for seven hours on Saturday. I do agree with council member Reeser about Sunday. This is a, a big church community and people are at church on Sunday mornings. So I, I would like, and I would like to see more hours on the weekend.
So what, what was your request for Saturday?
Eight to three.
Saturday, what did you say? Mary?
Are you, are you asking me? My, my request on Saturday was for a seven-hour day at either eight to three or nine to four. And what that would allow is additional hours on Saturday, progress that work during the day, even closing at 7:00 p.m. on Tuesdays and Thursdays. If people want, have to get home for dinner and have a, have a, you know, whether their kids are in baseball, soccer, or whatever. Sometimes weeknights are difficult. So this would give our residents the ability to have more open hours on Saturday. And then not changing the Tuesday, Thursday hours where people don't have to remember that soda's not the hours anymore.
All right, Mary, what were the hours for Tuesday and Thursday?
Two to seven.
Tuesday and Thursday would stay the same at 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Which we've had for, well, less than a year, but since we opened. And then Saturday would either be eight to three or nine to four. And there's nothing magical about 20 hours. I mean, it's, and I think that if we give them a couple more hours and stay with less days, it's easier for somebody to work a part-time job. If we have them come in six out of the seven days from what council member Alders recommended, that's coming in six out of the seven days. And I, I think that we might find that difficult to fill. I just think that to try to compassion more, to make it be more acceptable to somebody that wants to work a shift, work, you know, work those hours. They have three hours, three days, a two nine-hour days and a, and a seven, not seven-hour day. And we could even take the 10 to seven and go down to, go to 11 to, 11 to seven. And then that would be an eight case and we could go up on Saturday to eight, so... That would be 24 hours. Which might be more powerful to somebody.
Councilmember Greenberg, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I like the idea. It took us a year to educate people into those two days. So I, I think I'm kind of with Mary. If you do have a part-time job, this will be easier for you to get other employment on the other days. I like Saturday nine to four. And leaving Tuesday and Thursday where they are, at least open till seven. So when you come home from work, you can run to the recycling center, which I do. I'm like, oh, I got to get there, I got an hour and I'll get there. Saturday being, you know, four o'clock or whatever, nine to four, that's a good spread. Even if it went to five or six, I'd be fine with that. But Saturday is like the day. That's the work day.
So, so at last I heard Mary say maybe an 11 to seven Tuesday, Thursday. And nine, say a nine to five, that's three eight-hour days. Twenty-four hour part-time job. At 15 bucks an hour.
About nine to four on Saturday for the person who's, I mean, that's a long day on a Saturday when they might have something going on too. I think most people can get there between nine and four.
Twenty-three, twenty-four hours, but I think, I think probably, I don't, I don't know how many people on Tuesdays and Thursdays are there pre-11, but, you know, I think we can have some flexibility for finding that. You know, again, the expectation would be that they can, they can bail, they can collect money, they can do all the things that we did on Saturday. And the place should be looking pretty good if they keep up with it during the week. And it would, I think we'd save money having, wouldn't have to have Joe and Eric over there doing this at a higher rate of pay. And we'd be collecting, nobody'd be dropping junk off during these open hours that we have to then pay to haul away. And we also would get paid for everything that does come in. So I think this would pay for itself. If we could just settle in on the hours, 15 bucks an hour and, and cap it at 24 hours a week and let's settle in on what's the most productive hours. See what we get for candidates. So, but I, I agree with, with Joel. Keep the Tuesday, Thursday because people have got that finally settled down. And I think more hours on Saturday would be helpful because even when we were there, people were coming when we wanted to leave, so.
So 11 to seven Tuesday, Thursdays, and then you said nine to four?
So it either eight to four, nine to four, and nine to five. Eight hours on Saturday.
Did you say, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Did Mary say, Mary, did you say, tell me that when you got there at eight o'clock, there was already people waiting?
Yes, there were.
Ah, so maybe we better say eight o'clock. Because she already had people, she said, coming in Saturday before eight. So maybe we should do eight.
Go eight to four?
Sure. I mean, that's my opinion.
Tuesday, Thursday, 11 to seven, and Saturday, eight to four. Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayville.
I, I would prefer me to Tuesday, Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Again, that's what our residents know already.
That's our residents' way.
What the dream will have to be is they have more hours on Saturday.
Agreed.
That's a nine-hour day.
Oh, we have to pay overtime?
That's a long day. To be sitting at the recycling center for nine hours.
Well, bumping it back to better, back, bumping it back to 11 is better than dropping it down to six on those two days.
That is right, council member Reeser.
That'll be what we're saying.
Eleven to seven Tuesday, Thursday, and eight to four Saturday.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, and the rest of it, as, as explained in the RCA, sounds good. 15 bucks an hour, 24 hours a week.
Yep.
All right?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rayville.
I just had, just had, uh, Ms. Strick. So this person will be responsible for everything. You have got cardboard boxes right in the neighbors. I mean, we, you're also finishing the plastic bailing, right?
That's correct.
I mean, if, everything that's part of cleaning and keeping the recycle center running, right?
Everything.
Yeah, I would, I would say the equivalent of what Dan Bryan was doing. So one of the things that obviously, trying to keep up with everything else we have with small, short staff, we haven't been using the tenant sweeper. That would be a, a nice thing to get back to using too is actually sweeping up the debris in front of the recycling and on the inside when it's clean.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg.
I suggest to Lori Strick that this person be at least 25 years old.
Okay.
I don't think it should be a teenager looking for summer help. I think it should be some sort of an adult. They're going to be required to run that big machine. They're also going to be required to not confront, but educate people that are coming in with bona fide garbage that know what they're doing. They're going to have, I'm talking about the garbage people. They know they're dumping it. They have to be educated, which Dan and I had to do. The other thing they need to do is some people bona fide don't know and they have to be educated. But it's uncomfortable when they're trying to dump in their plastic into the bin and you're trying to educate them, we don't take the plastic trike. We don't take the plastic swing set. So they're gonna, it's going to be a, not a tough position, but they need to have some wherewithal about them. And then finally, they're having to be educated enough to where they're like, let's see what you got. I'm going through my list. Oh, it's right here, that's $10. Take the payment. And they, so they have to make the deductive reasoning, you're bringing me a this. No, that thing there, the, the, um, the vacuum cleaner, that doesn't come here. That goes somewhere else. They have, so they, you understand what I'm saying?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Quite frankly, I think a 15-hour day, an hour job in this culture right now where they can't get people to waitress, I just was at, they're having true people trouble coming back even for a haircut, cutting, and, I mean, salons. They're just not coming back to work. It's not going to be that easy for us to be really picky about who we pick. I mean, I, yeah, that'd be great. I'm with Joel 100%. I'm just saying, if you've been listening to the news, that's the big cry from all the businesses. They can't get people who are willing to work for minimum wage and come back.
Right.
And so I don't think it's going to be that easy to find somebody.
Well, we give it a go and see what we can do.
Yeah.
But obviously, they also, in addition to what Joel was saying, they have to be trusted with money.
Yes, that's right, and they have to be educated. You're right.
If, if there's six refrigerators there, you better have 60 bucks turned in.
Yeah, you're right. I hope we get someone older. I mean, that'd be wonderful.
Well, now that there's no more table of knowledge and wisdom, maybe one of those guys wants a job.
Who?
Table of knowledge and wisdom over in Bill's.
Yeah, all of the old guys. Maybe one of those.
All right. So as modified, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the as-modified RCA for a, uh, recycling center attendant for 24 hours at 15 bucks an hour on the times noted with the discussion from this council.
I second it.
Motion seconded. Any other discussion?
Oh, yeah. So Lori, that was just a suggestion of mine.
I understand. I'll do my best, Joel.
From personal experience.
Hopefully, she can get the, the person that you want. We're all hoping.
Well, I, I do think, you know, that, I appreciate the, the time that councilman Greenberg and Brian put in on that. They learned firsthand, you know. Most people are pretty compliant if you, if you educate them. Some people try and sneak it through and some people are less than happy about it, so.
Maybe we could hire you to do the training.
There you go. All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. At Farmer's Market RCA for stipend, that came...
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, councilmember Rayville.
Councilmember Blake, do you want to talk about this? You had to originally draw, please pass forward.
You go ahead, sunshine.
Well, so, so council, uh, councilmember Blake, a couple months back brought up the idea of providing a stipend for our market coordinator, assistant coordinator, and the market manager. So Linda and I reached out to 26 different markets in the, in the area. We received feedback from 21. The RCA says how many were supported, run by nonprofit or chamber and then volunteer run. There were 15 market assets personnel who were paid either an hourly wage or a stipend, whether it be a city-supported, a nonprofit or chamber, or volunteer. Sometimes they have their booth fees waived. So councilmember Blake and I are recommending is that the, but, is that the council wishes to show their support for farmers, for the farmer's market and for those who make it possible to continue year to year. We request that the council approve the following actions. And one is effective with the 2021 market season, the market coordinator repays it 500 ounce stipend. And the assistant market coordinator and the market manager each be provided a $250 stipend. And that, second is that the city staff ask for above stipends to our budget discussions for 2022.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
We've already budgeted $1,500 for the farmer's market. And talking with Mary, there probably won't be necessary to use most of that money this year. And so if we pay those people, we could take it out of that already budgeted 1,500. And you probably wouldn't have to add more money to that. Isn't that correct, Mary?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's councilmember Blake. That is correct. The market this year has come to play some, have to purchase some miscellaneous things, which would basically be hand cleaner, uh, you know, this miscellaneous, I would say, less than $100. And then also for councilmember Alders being new to the council, the, the farmer's market is budgeted $1,600, but they bring in money based on the vendor fees that they are, that the vendors paid for their booths. So most often, unless something's dramatic happen, most often it was a net wash between what we budgeted for the farmer's market and what they brought in. So even though we budgeted over $1,600, that's going to be offset by the revenue of the, of the vendor fee. I didn't know we know that.
All right.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Alders.
Should the market coordinator make more than the P and Z team members?
That's the whole season. They're not getting month for month. That's just for the whole season.
I know, you get 20 bucks a meeting if you're a P and Z member.
So the question was, the market coordinator be making more than the P and Z members?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Alders, I, I believe in this instance that the dollars are worth it. They spend 14 weeks at a minimum on site from noon, I think it is, until probably 7:30 or 8:00. They have additional responsibilities that they are responsible for in its market coordination, getting vendors there, sabotaging. They, they work almost year-round on the market. So I, I feel that, that they are well-deserving of those, those stipends.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
Jason, would... Jason, would you feel like, uh, I do feel they should get something. We've never talked to them about it, so, would you feel better if like, the market manager got $250 for the year?
If it's a wash, and we're saying it's a net wa, I mean, just perspective-wise, the P and Z, we say are accountable for helping us with all of our ordinance and stuff.
Right.
Make, if they have 12 meetings, they make 240 bucks. And there's usually a couple that are canceled, so, and I'm, we just, if we're all good with it, that's fine, but then we have to defend it. Mary has a good argument, if they work 14 Saturdays and they're there for seven or eight hours, and they're accountable for off-season, making sure we get vendor relations and people showing up, because it does add value to the community, I'm just saying, it's outside looking in, the market coordinator makes double what we're saying is important from a P and Z job.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
I actually see his point with this, I mean, we have to be careful with that. I wonder, this is probably gonna open a can of worms, maybe, maybe the P and Z people should get a little more money than 20 bucks a meeting, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
And I, I agree with Councilmember Blake, in fact, if, if we feel that it's unfair to the P and Z members that we bring someone right forward in RCA, um, looking to, uh, add, to increase the dollar amount for applying the zoning committee now, or in a longer, you know, Councilmember Alders, I mean, yeah, we have 10 meetings a year, um, that, that's, it's not a lot of money, um, there are only a couple hours a night, I, I don't know how much prep time people put into them, um.
But that's gonna change, Mary.
But I, I believe that the dollars here are appropriate for the work that is done by those three market management personnel, and we can adjust the P and Z member compensation in a, in an RCA.
And I, I, I do think that, that it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, yes, it's, you know, certainly that we can have the discussion on compensation for the commission members, but, but I think the 14 weeks and the, the long days and, and the coordination, you're also having, and how many vendors are typically there at, in the farmer's market, you're coordinating all those vendors, it, it is pretty rigorous, they also have events quarterly, uh, outside of the, the market season. And I, I think that, that in this day and age, finding people that are willing to do that.
Yeah.
You know, those cities that are paying, staff members who are paying a lot more money for staff members to do it than if we were trying to do this some other way. So I think it's a, um, not to dismiss the idea of how we compensate commission members, but I think it's an apples-and-oranges comparison here, because there's a lot of rigor that goes on, I mean, just setting up and taking down, and, and the fewer volunteers we have, the, the more falls on these three people, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
It's interesting that Darlene, as the market coordinator, have all your loss, you know, continuing to work, looking for vendors, looking for, um, activities to occur during the market, um, talking with the residents where we wanna be able to place our signs, you know, there, there's work other than the market period. The 14 weeks plus the, you know, the long day on that day, there's much more work involved than that.
And I think, and, and to my point there is, they're also managing, they're managing personnel, they're, they're managing as opposed to much of our P and Z, and again, just to separate the two, but, but a lot of that is, is presented by Liz, who's doing the finding of facts, and then we're doing research from there, so. All right, I'm good.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Alders said he's good, so. Go ahead, Mary.
Okay, I think in the, that the market coordinator's responsible for trying to find volunteers, scheduling volunteers, there's a lot that goes into this market, and we've been very fortunate as a city for the last 10 years that we've had the volunteers that we've had, we've had somebody with the commitment, which was Linda Calacca, to see this from, you know, a seedling to a full-grown, uh, cornstalk, um, you know, and we're lucky to have it, and I think that we need to compensate those people for that work.
All right, that being said, I need a motion in a second.
So I would move, um, that effective with the 2021 market season, the market coordinator be provided a $500 stipend, and the assistant market coordinator and the market manager each be provided $250 stipend, and that city staff ask about the stipend amount into the upcoming 2022 farmer's market budget discussion.
I'll second it, and motion and second. Any other discussion? Who are the, these three people?
Darlene King.
Um, yes, Darlene King, Nick Stoll, and Julia Fike.
All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, motion carries. Councilmember Rainville.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, who seconded that?
Jason.
I'm sorry, what?
Jason.
Jason did.
Jason, all right, thank you.
All right. So we got, real, real quickly, what's next?
I, the other thing I added in was special meetings, um, having special meetings, except the interviews and selection process, the planning and going. And I was, I have surgery next week, so I'm out, so I'd be looking at Thursday, May 27th to be, if we could do it with PM. Does, reable the council?
You're, you're tying up my phone, but I'll, I'll assume I'm open on a Thursday.
I'm sorry, what?
I have to double-check that.
You're tying up my phone right now, so I can't check my calendar, but I, I'm assuming, my Thursdays are typically open, so.
Can we do it Monday? Just continue on there?
Put it on the same thing, the 24th, you mean?
But I got four things. Well, I can't believe the cell tower thing can take that long, and Josh's grading plan can't be that big a discussion.
Is it?
No, the grading plan's the same exact one he had for page one, so it's.
Okay. Yeah, maybe, how about if we do it 24th, I like that, and get, and free up a different night, and we just get, plow through.
Yeah, 'cause the 27th doesn't work for me.
Now, Mary, now that you don't have another commitment on the 24th, can we just add a fifth thing to, uh, that night?
Well, we have a six to seven, a seven to eight, and possibly eight to nine with the other two I's.
Well, they were just saying that.
Would they like to go after nine o'clock?
They're just saying that the, the grading plan and the cell tower shouldn't take long, so.
And if they do, then we're after nine o'clock, so I, I guess I'm, we'll get the wind to June.
It's like 10:30 now.
Yeah, what's the difference? Let's get it over with.
So.
Fine, that's fine, that's a false alarm.
All right, 24th.
Are we done?
Real quickly, I just want people to be aware that the League of Minnesota City's Annual Conference and Training will be June, uh, week of June 22nd, 23rd, 24th, I don't exactly sure what, but if people are interested in that, it's $99, and if all five sign up, it's $50 discount, so.
I will be, won't be able to sign up, we rented a cabin for that time.
Okay, cool. So, I don't know, Lori, you've got that information yet?
I have it. I have it.
If you could forward that to the council members. Mary, you had one on there for Saturday recycling event?
Yes, I just would like to say, um, city staff, the mayor, Councilmember Blake, and Greenberg for following through with their commitments for the recycle event, I think it was lower than usual, but it was still very well-respected.
What are you saying, Mary?
You're welcome, Mary.
No problem, Mary.
All right, so the last thing.
Appreciate the comment, Mary.
Is that it?
Great passive-aggressive work. Uh, uh, Jason, you had one on here, schedule another meeting for, follow up on our lot split.
Yes, so we need to have that discussion with Liz and the team on how those discussions are going, and what we need to do differently, or what communication needs to.
Go out.
Yeah.
All right, so, 24th is full, 27th, Joel, you said you can't make?
When about the week of, uh, the 17th through the 21st? I mean, that means one meeting per week. Mary's gone?
Mary's.
She's got surgery.
Yeah, Sunday, Monday is a very accessible meeting, so I, I'm busy, and then I have surgery the 18th, and I don't know what the rest of that week will, will entail for me, so I, I can't miss anything.
Rotate a couple.
It comes along to me, that's fine, but I, I cannot guarantee.
I, I think we don't want the whole council there for that, so.
So what was the?
That was the week of the 17th, she's booked.
Oh.
And Joel's not available Wednesday or Thursday of the next week. Tuesday, I'm gonna guess, is P and Z. And Monday, we're full up already. And the following Monday is Memorial Day.
And I'll probably be gone, I'll be gone Memorial Day weekend, and I may not be around the first, which is the Tuesday after Memorial Day.
And I will be gone, I won't be here for, uh, next month, I'm being in Hawaii, I'm sorry, team.
Are you serious?
I have to suffer, have to go to Hawaii.
The whole month, good for you.
No, for the third, the third through the 11th. Of June, I will be gone. So, but I don't have to be there.
I think it's important to have all five meetings.
June 15th.
June 15th?
The day of the week, Tuesday.
Yep.
Okay, I'll be home by then.
Mary, June 15th, work for you?
I, it does, at this time, I, um, we may take a trip, but I don't know when, um, but I can try to do a call in.
What time? 6:30 or 7:00 start?
6:00 PM.
Let's go at 7:00.
7:00, here?
Yep. Historic Town Hall.
Oh dear, I don't even know what I did with the keys to that truck.
If there's nothing else, I move to adjourn.
I second.
All right, we adjourn.
Goodnight, y'all.
Goodnight. Joel, don't leave me till I find my keys.